Can I have order in the court? I am calling a meeting to order it's 10 a.m. Roque.
Mr. Moxa, please.
President.
Commissioner O'Leary.
Here.
Commissioner Robert. Please. We use that one.
President.
Commissioner Robert, you look at that.
We have an absence. We do have a quorum. 1.3 Public Allegiance. If you are presented today, you are under oath. 1.5 Public Comments. 1.6 Approval of Minutes of Meeting September 8, 2025.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Commissioner Talamontes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.1 Approval of Bonds. We have a bond out of the JP office. A bond out of the Sheriff's Office. A bond out of the Constable's Office. A bond out of the JP's Office. We have another bond for a reserve deputy. I don't know what office it's from.
It doesn't say. Excuse me?
Motion to approve.
Second motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. The motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona was again in second by Commissioner Talamontes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.2 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval of Texas Department of Agriculture Texans Feeding Texans Home Delivered Meal Grant Resolution Program Year 2026. CSA. Good morning, Ms. McDeans. Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. You're welcome. Resolution authorizing the County Program Year 2026. A resolution of the County of Dimmitt County, Texas, certifying that the county has made a grant to community service agencies of South Texas, an organization that provides home-delivered meals to homebound persons in the county who are elderly and/or have a disability, and certifying that the county has approved the organization's accounting system or fiscal agent, whereas the organization seeks to apply for grant funds from the Texas Department of Agriculture to supplement and extend existing services for homebound persons in the county who are elderly or have a disability pursuant to the Home Delivery Meal Grant Program. Whereas the program rules the county in which an organization is providing home-delivered meals to make a grant to the organization in order for the organization to be eligible to receive program grant funds, and whereas the program rules further require the county to approve the organization's accounting system or fiscal in order for the organization to be eligible to receive program grant funds. Be it resolved by the county. Section 1, the county hereby certifies that it has made a grant to the organization in the amount of $250,000 to be paid and used between 1st of September 2025, excuse me, and the 31st of August 2026. The county hereby certifies the organizations to provide home-delivered meals to homebound persons in the county who are elderly or have a disability. The county hereby certifies that it has approved the organization's accounting system or fiscal agent, which means financial management system requires a set forth in the Texas Grant Management Statutes provided by the Texas COC, the Republic of Accountants, introduced and read and passed by affirmative vote of this county Commissioners Court on today's date, 22nd of September 2025. I am Artalicia Ponce, County Judge, due here as authorized official of the county, signed this resolution. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner O'Leary.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Talamontes.
If this comment top versus here, excuse me, is this going to help with this?
No, ma'am. This is the resolution that authorizes to give him the funding that we passed in the budget last, two weeks ago.
Okay.
It's just that in order for them to be eligible to apply for grants, there has to be a resolution between the county and their program.
Yeah, I decided that for me, I thought you were going to alert him and then I was like, no, wait, let's.
Thank you, Mr. Deans. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.3 Discussion and Appropriate Action, Texas Parks and Wildlife Authority over the Dimmitt County, Lake Dimmitt County Game Warden. Commissioners, we have Game Warden, State Police Officer, Ms. Macy, here today requesting to advise the court. She had initially advised the judge's office that after speaking to the county attorney, Mr. Gonzalez, he had advised her that she had no authority over the Dimmitt County Pond Lake. However, in her further discussion with her supervisors, she was advised to the contrary, so she respectfully requested to be here today to advise the court and represent to the court her position and the state of Texas Game Warden's position. Go ahead, Ms. Deans.
Hi, good morning. So I'm just Game Warden, if I haven't mentioned, here I am today. So I just wanted to clear up that on your jurisdiction over that pond, my department stocks the pond, and we want to upkeep it, and I've been told by Justice or Attorney Gonzalez that I do not have authority over it, and I just want to clear it up that I do, and know that the county does have my back, and that I am 100% able to go write tickets there, or enforce law, or just be present there, and have the county backing and be allowed to be there.
Questions?
No, I think we came to a conclusion that we always, I know that me and you have had discussions first coming in, and you know that you were always welcome, and I respected your enforcement coming in, and I really did need the help, as you know that it is a popular area where a lot of kids go, and we have a lot of issues, so being able to have an extra set of eyes on it, we definitely appreciate it from the county.
Is there, well, I do have, is there anything we need to post down there, saying that you, that is being monitored by you?
No, it's labeled as a state water body by the state of Texas, so by law, by jurisdiction, I have full jurisdiction there, you don't need to list that, that it's known, it's a public place, and so by being public and by being noted as a public water body, then I have jurisdiction, so there's no need to post it. Just me coming here today is just wanting to get backed up from y'all and clarification that y'all 100% support me, and all in one place, all at one time, just get that said out the ballot, just put it out there, so that way I know for sure, and the rest of y'all also know for sure, good eyes, I'm there.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
My question to you is, if the county was to be interested in adopting an ordinance, being that it is a lake that was established basically for the youth, and as you may know, there have been times where people may not understand, and instead of catch and release, when they have people taking fish out, you order consumption. If, when the county was to establish your ordinance, would you be able to assist with that monitoring of the ordinance, or would there be something that be monitored by the county?
That being counted, so as a state police officer, I'm not allowed to enforce any kind of city or county ordinances, but your local deputies would be able to enforce those. Are you looking to start an ordinance to make a catch and release, or are you?
Well, I think historically speaking, it's just like an unsaid role, but I think they originally, the.
We've been having issues with what's been happening. We've been noticing that people have been taking it to feed other ponds and everything else in the area, and it's not necessarily like the youth that's taking out the fish and, you know, it's grown.
Absolutely.
Grown adults that should know better, and if we're going to be able to preserve it, so that way the kids can enjoy it all year long, it has been something that has been on mine, and the rest of the Commissioners Court has played as well, that we have been discussing it, to make sure that we make it to where it is feasible for them to be able to enjoy for the whole year. But there has been a decrease, and that's why we've been considering practicing that catch and release.
Okay, absolutely. Our department, so I spoke with our fish in the fisheries department, and that topic got brought up specifically as it being catch and release, and the sustainability of a pond is affected by that currently, so the reason that there's limits on how big a fish has to be to take it is to help with that sustainability, taking it catch and release only is not going to help with that to a point. So with us stocking it yearly, we put a lot of fish in that pond, and people keeping, there's a lot of people fishing in it, but not really. Like, it may seem like a very populated area here, but compared to towns like Waco, Houston, this pond is not populated, and there's no way that if people went and kept 10 fish a day, they still would not complete the population. So I see the issue you're saying, and with.
Well, thank you for that information.
Absolutely. So with me having all backing, I do plan to start going more often and catch people that are keeping the fish, that are undersized and everything else, and so that'll help prevent it, but I can get our inland fisheries department to get a little bit of report to help with that as well, to show the difference in catch and release and taking the fish out of the ponds, to show you all the sustainability numbers and that. Yes, while taking it, it is scary, and it does seem like there's only 100 fish in the pond, and if everyone keeps two, we're going to run out shortly, but that's not the case. That pond is big enough to sustain itself, and the fish are able to populate it, and so it's actually a really good ecosystem that's able to sustain itself, and so the catch and release is an option to talk about, but it's not.
It's not a hard problem.
Yes, it's me going there and enforcing people keeping a certain size limit should help, and then if we get in the future and we do a survey on the pond, and we're like, yeah, maybe it is a little long, then we'll reevaluate making a catch and release.
Thank you for that information. I think my distinct understanding was initially what this court wanted to establish was a catch and release, because they were anticipating that lake or pond to be used as an easier activity for recreational purposes, and also to preserve the sustainability of it, but now that you're educating us that there's way more fish than fishers, I think that that's good information, because perhaps maybe if you guys can bring us a report, and that report indicates that there is no need for a catch and release, and that may solve a lot of the issues, and then having you there, being proactive and making sure that the number of fish are being caught per day, they're not exceeding that number, or the weight limit, I think that that would also keep it sustainable. Thank you.
I still think, as well, Judge, that, I don't think that she's saying that the catch and release isn't not going to help us out at all. It would help us, it's just not going to solve our problem completely, but it would be beneficial for us to hold on it right now.
At this time, I would say hold off. Let me start enforcing the limits and regulations, and we'll go from there, and I can present all of that information, the data from our department, where inland fisheries, and we can show you the difference, and if at a later date you do want to move towards catch and release, I can, that's not something I can enforce, that would be a local county thing, because it'd be ordinance at that point, and so I can help aid in that and make sure people are only keeping big fish, but at this time, I don't take the catch and releases. We're going to stock it in October, and I can give you a number of how many fish we're going to put in it, and we can go from there. Stocking it yearly like we are, there's so many fish in there, and you don't have to align it, and not every fish comes to the surface to get caught, some are smarter than others, and so there's plenty to go around, and that's a very dry ecosystem, and it's a perfect type of pond, and the fish are flourishing. So there should be a worry that it's going to run out, I see the concern, and from the outside looking in, it is a concern, but after speaking at my department, it shouldn't be one. So, yes, that is something that I would table that, and then we'll look at it in the future, and if it does become a bigger problem, then absolutely, we could.
No, yeah, and just because it was the first step, that was a compromise that we had, because the first solution that they had was they wanted us to gate and lock up the park, and that's not something that we wanted to do, because we have so many people that enjoy walking and night fishing and other things, so I appreciate that, I really do appreciate the permission you showed us there.
Absolutely, yeah, anytime if y'all have any questions, I'm here, come on, reach out.
It was just a suggestion that we had, I remember we were saying to lock it rather, because we were trying to control the night fishing. We talked about it here before.
Thank you.
And when we host our event in October, October 11th, we're going to try to make that event more of a catch and release, we'll deal just for the sake of the event itself, there's going to be, we hope it's a good turnout, and so for that event, we're going to encourage catch and release, just on the sheer amount of people that are going to be there, but after that, we feel that the pond will be able to stay being catch and release. We catch a few, it's a bit for a size.
Thank you, Game Warden. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
No action is needed, Ms. McDeans.
You're welcome.
Thank you, have a good day. 3.4 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from JP Precinct 1, Ms. Sonia Cadet Albedes for the month of August 2025. I'm going to table that item. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Talamontes. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.5 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from JP Precinct 2, Mr. Alberto Esquivel for the month of August 2025. Morning, Judge.
Morning, Judge.
Good to see you, Judge. How are you?
Very good, very good.
Well, I'm happy, one, to see that you're here with us, and two, I commend you for your commitment to Dimmitt County. You were just in the hospital, and here you are today, representing your report, so I appreciate that very much.
I always go over and get a stress test. I'm sure the coroner gives you one.
I'm sure he does.
It would have been better to come with one, right?
Glad to hear it, Judge. You gave him a stress test.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Commissioner Talamontes, and a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
3.6 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from JP Precinct 3, Ms. Letizia Hernandez for the month of August 2025.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. I keep saying August 25th instead of 24th. Morning, Judge.
Everything running okay at the office? Yeah, good. And you had, I know that you were on the waitlist as well, but are we, we're not done with the panic button, doing your office script? The panic button? They are? Okay.
Any other questions of Judge Almanez?
Motion, Judge.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, and a second by Commissioner Talamontes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge. 3.7 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from JP Precinct 4, Mr. Alfredo Martinez for the month of August 2025.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Judge. What about your panic buttons? Are they installed already?
What?
The panic buttons, are they installed in your office?
Uh.
Not yet? Okay. We're still working on them, we're having a few connection issues, so there's still a few that we're still planning to get them done, but they're on the way.
Not at all.
They're on the.
Not yet.
Questions of Judge Martinez? How I entertain a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Odena, a second by Commissioner Talamontes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
3.8 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from District Clerk Ms. Mari Salak Gonzalez for the month of August 2025.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
No cases for the month of August, Ms. Martinez? But no Commissioner, as a matter, we don't have grand jury yet. Okay. One has not been handled.
Ms. Gonzalez, when is grand jury supposed to be impaneled? I see that in July there was no cases either, and August, no cases.
The July term for this year, the grand jury should have been impaneled in July.
So it's delayed a little?
So. So right now, any cases that need to be indicted or not be indicted, is what you're saying?
I'm hoping that the court will open up, we'll get things back in order for us. Is that overcrowded?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we close on that, Commissioner Carmona?
Should be done by Wednesday.
Yes, I'm real close on it.
We just need a couple of quicks, we gotta take care of, and it should be a proper body. Let's just sit there and say for sure.
Perfect. Who's in charge of the grand jury? Is that you or somebody else?
The grand jury, why is it sitting here? It's my office, but right now it's Judge Vasquez's turn, and he needs to qualify and handle the grand jury. So I'm hoping that once he gets back into the historical courthouse, he will do that.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Commissioner Talamontes.
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.9 Discussion. Thank you, Ms. Mari. 3.9 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from the County Clerk Ms. Claudia McDaniel for the month of August 2025.
On Friday, I spoke with the credit card processing center that Ms. Mari uses for the clerk's office, and I think it's something that our office wants to go to, is integrating with the LGS, to make some different markers on their receipt and handling of the board.
What credit card system do you have now?
14.
Ms. Mari does not use 14?
It's a 14. And so I'll be reading that for a couple of days.
Can you repeat what server you have?
She has 14.
And it's, which one do you charge your questions?
The integration of the LGS for the management.
And the LGS is what you use for the software for the clerk's office and the.
Our case management.
Our case management for court.
That's for me and her, not it.
But who all uses it? Because I just started using, Ms. Mari uses it.
Ms. Mari uses it, my office uses it, and the county clerk's offices use it, and then here in the next month, your, Ms. Gonzalez's office is going to use it. But for purposes of accepting payment, that would be Mrs. McDaniel and Mrs. Mari.
So make it easier for the.
Because it's integrated into the LGS program.
Instead of them to be double answering, and then makes their reporting as well on the backside easier.
I'm sure we'll put that on time as well for employees.
This is redundant work that's unnecessary.
Any other questions from Ms. McDaniel's report?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, a second by Commissioner Talamontes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.10 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for County Clerk Ms. Claudia McDaniel, Chief Deputy Clerk Ms. Villanueva Sandoval, Deputy Clerk Sally Flores, Clerk Delma De León to attend the 2025 LGS Users Conference in Irving, Texas, November 19th through the 21st, 2025.
Judge, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. De León is not with.
It's supposed to say Judge Clerk, Judge's Clerk, not Clerk. Well, she's a Clerk.
But it's still, still under Ms. McDaniel's? You have her.
No, she won't be under Ms. McDaniel's, it'll come out of my budget, it should be under my budget.
This is all the one.
It's just all because there are one and the same.
But she wasn't hired for your office to PO's?
Yes, and she also gets the LGS system as well. She utilizes the LG.
That wasn't what we were talking about.
She utilizes.
Maybe it's confusing, just because we talked one, you know, all of a sudden.
No, you're not told one thing, and you're not told another. The thing is, is that everybody in my office cross trains, everybody has to be cross hearing. When she was brought over from Mr. Garcia's office, she was LGS Clerk, and she continues to do LGS, and she continues to do the PO system, and in order for us to keep her certified to use the LGS system, must cross train for when my clerk coordinator's not there, she needs to attend this training.
So she's doing LGS training?
She does LGS as well, yes, sir. It's very simple, Commissioner, if you don't want to approve it, don't approve it, she cross trains.
I'm not sure, all I'm asking, this is a simple question.
Your line of question is there, and my.
My question was only that if she, if she was hired for another position, why was it under?
Well, I, I think it's.
And again, I don't see it under the judge or anybody.
I think it suffices.
That was just a question I had, man, you make it.
No, I'm just saying, I think it suffices to say.
I'm a problem solver, I'm not.
No, I'm not a problem solver, I'm just saying, it suffices to say when you hire someone in your precinct that is supposed to just, let's say, for instance, pick up trash, they do other stuff as well, they're not just picking up trash, that's what you hired, that's what the listing says, but in every department, show me one department where they don't cross train, where they don't do stuff. I'm sure Ms. Mary Sandoval has people doing different things, not just hiring them to do one thing. Commissioner, I'm sure you have different people doing different things.
We all.
Exactly, so I'm telling you right now that Ms. Delma, when she was brought to my office, she came as an LGS individual, she started doing the PO's because we needed the PO person, she continues to do the PO's, and she continues to do the LGS cross trains with the coordinator, court coordinator, so when the court coordinator's not here, Ms. Delma does the court coordinating, and this item right here is not under Ms. McDaniel's office, it's under mine. However, they were put all together because it's all the same training, it would be coming out of the judge's budget line item, not Ms. McDaniel's.
Judge, may I?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the issues that I had with this was, one, that your employees' training on, their training funds comes out of our training funds, which I did not agree with, which is why I voiced that when we did budget talk. The second issue that I'm having with it is, Mr. Carmona is right, Commissioner Carmona is right, technically, when we were submitting our agenda items, it's never allowed for me to submit an add-on to somebody else's agenda item, the office should have submitted their own agenda, but I will say that the travel request is done, so we buy our office, and it's not included with Ms. McDaniel's office, so there are two different travel request forms on it.
Yes.
The last issue that I'm having, those are minor issues that can simply be overlooked, nothing to mean that being, choosing to point them out, the issue that I'm having with, and I mean this at no disrespect whatsoever, but we have set up here multiple times where you have explained to us that our PO's are delayed, or they're not inputted, or something wrong with them, because, so to speak, that this employee is not tech savvy, she does not do anything other than this, and it's been said multiple times while we're recording in this Commissioners Court, so for you to say that she came LGS certified does speak a little bit into it, but has she been doing this this entire time? Because I'm telling you, every time that we've heard about it, and she's just being truthful, speaking to you, you have always told us that this individual is not tech savvy, and this is why you have this individual only performing PO's, that it is her sole responsibility, and it's what she does. Now, I do not mind if you're seeing the possibility for, hey, we can cross train, because you know that I am one that believes on cross training our employees to make better sense of all the funds that we have, but this is the first that I am.
So let me just clarify for you, Commissioner Talamontes, as a matter of fact, Ms. Delma, and Commissioner Odena, Commissioner Carmona, I can tell you, she attended this training last year.
Okay.
It was approved by this court for her to attend this training last year, she went to this training last year, and so did my other court coordinator, Julisa. She went to this training last year, and so did, uh, my other court coordinator, Julisa. However, Julisa is not available to attend this training this year for personal reasons, so Delma, um, is asking to go. You are completely right, um, it should have been a different agenda item. However, um, Ms. Hernandez put it together for, I suppose, I cannot speak on Ms. Hernandez's behalf, I did review the agenda, and quite frankly, I didn't even see Delma's name on there, to be honest. Um, but nonetheless, um, Ms. De León did come to my office as a certified LGS user. Um, and, uh, LGS is different than I would say tech savvy, because when I say tech savvy, I mean, um, Excel, Word, and whatnot. LGS is more of inputting things into the system, just kind of like the PO system. You input things, it allows you to look at the defendant, and allows you to look at everything that we have for the court. And that's what she used to do for Mr. Garcia. So when I brought her over here, she was doing LGS. As a matter of fact, she was training Julisa in doing LGS, because Delma was way more, uh, equipped and knowledgeable in LGS than Julisa.
Then why didn't you keep Delma whenever she first came? And just do it...
They, they asked, Mr. Garcia had asked me if I wouldn't mind bringing Delma to me.
I know, but if, if Delma had more experience, why didn't you...
Because Delma doesn't have experience in court coordinating.
So just for the system itself?
For the system itself, yes. So nonetheless, like I said, this was approved by the same commissioners with the exception of you.
Yes, ma'am.
This was approved for Delma to go to last year. And last year, she was still the PO officer, and these two gentlemen to my left approved for her to go. Today, I'm not gonna waste the court's time, I'm not gonna waste the people in the, in the sitting's time. If you don't want to approve Delma to go, don't approve Delma to go. I just wanted to advise the court that, with the exception of yourself, Commissioner Talamontes, everyone else here approved for her to go last year.
And it is fact that she went last year?
You can look at the minutes, Mr. Pedra, I can tell you, um, he can pull up the stuff.
Okay.
Um, she went, her and Julisa went last year.
Okay, and the, I know now that, um, it feels personal, I can assure you that this is not personal. Um, I will motion to approve this time, but I will let you know before, and let the court know before, that started on October first, I will not be motioning to approve any of your court or any of your employees' travel, just because I felt so strongly that it should have been divided. Um, but speaking that we are at an October first, and I know all fairness, to be fair, I will wait and motion to approve it.
And I'd just be very careful with that statement you made, Commissioner, because that, your, that statement you're making is on underhook, and that's showing your bias already, but thank you for letting me know.
Well, I told you what we're doing. It gives you... Hold on, let me explain, because you left it as if I'm trying to take this personal. Everybody's office gets a certain amount of funds, let's just say it's three thousand. That three thousand is meant for training for that office, for you to train your employees for that. Every office gets it. The judge's staff does not get that. The judge's staff gets what we have. So when we're adding funds for us to travel, for us to continue our training, that's also including her employees. So it's an unlimited of funds. While every other department is making do with five thousand, three thousand, whatever it is that it's allowed, the judge's office has an unlimited amount of fund for training. And that's what I did not agree with, and I spoke very vocal about it. I was the only person on this court that's very vocal about it, that I felt that they needed to have their own budget set aside, aside from the judges and commissioners. Again, this is not to be personal. I know other commissioners that don't look on certain things because they don't believe in it, and they hold to it the entire year. I felt strongly that it should have been separated. But again, like I'm telling you, it's not October first yet, we're still dealing with the funds, even though we've had to add money to this fund. Maybe we've already added twenty thousand, or ten thousand. What's it not, twenty or ten?
I don't, I don't have the numbers.
Uh, somewhere, ten thousand into our training, twenty thousand into our training, added from what we already had. That is why I'm standing where I'm standing. Not to be personal against any person or any person in the office, I feel strongly that we do need trainings. You can have a new staff that comes in, and I've already told you. I would expect for you to train in the positions that they need to be trained in, but I'm going back to say that I did not think that it was fair. And then you're dealing situations like this where it doesn't feel truthful whenever your employees is getting snuck in with another office employees.
Please give them the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Talamontes, and a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries three point one one, discussion and appropriate action. Approval of adjustment of twenty two, twenty twenty six sheriffs and constables fees and authorizing the county clerk clerk to report to State Comptroller's Office.
Judge, speaking with Mr. Pedra, uh, we advise that we should leave them the same courtesy. So that they can obtain, like, enough to go collect the...
Correct. Correct. Any questions?
Yes.
Have a motion by Commissioner Carmona?
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Urdanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point one two, discussion and appropriate action. Approval of special election for November fourth, two thousand twenty five constitutional amendments.
That you all, that's the, the order, and it's the...
This is for this November?
For this November. So, uh, that's what it's, the constitutional amendment, so it's on the, on the back.
Okay.
When did you say that was on the back, Ms. McDaniel, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear the...
When did you say that was on the back? Because all I'm seeing is the general item request. I'm not seeing a backup to the... Special election, September fourth, constitutional amendments.
Do you want to table it in the State House? Or, or, it's just, it's, it's the same information from the order, instead of our, the holding place?
Okay. This is all where we spoke of that Catarina was no longer gonna have a voting place? Right?
Um, correct, we haven't had them in a while, they're consolidated with...
What was the voting place that we said that was being moved?
Instead of...
It's, uh, J, precinct four, five, and seven is gonna be moved to the Petri Building now.
Not that, yeah. Well, four and five was still being in Michigan, but precinct seven...
So precinct seven, which is for Carrizo Hill, it used, they, they used to go and vote over at the courthouse south, way over yonder. Now they're gonna be moved here in the Petri Building.
We're gonna try it for, for the, that, you know, like, the south, convenient as well.
Do you need this back?
Um, I'll leave it at that.
Motion to...
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona?
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Jose Urdanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action to approve the purchase of E-Pole Books DS three hundred scanner and reporting station for the total of forty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars from E S and S by board.
Um, this, this case, I've spoken to about, uh, with the hologram. Uh, there's plenty in my present, it's, uh, amended, or they're just on the other two, just so that it's covered for sure, uh, because we're still waiting on the grant.
You have enough money to cover this?
If, if, it does, but...
So if the grant comes in?
Then we'll get, uh, multiple papers, there's, there's two thousand five hundred paper.
When's the last time that this equipment was upgraded, Ms. McDaniel? Or has it been in your...
This is what we all do.
Motion to her.
I have a motion by Commissioner Talamontes?
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Urdanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point one four, discussion and appropriate action. Monthly report from Dimmitt County Assistant Fire Chief Mr. David Torres for the month of August twenty twenty five.
Judge, morning, Judge.
Morning.
Morning.
As you can see, for the month of August, we had a total of twelve calls with one burn band lactation issue. Uh, that was gonna be on the six at the K Bar Ranch off of eighteen sixty-seven for a pit fire.
Motion to her.
I have a motion by Commissioner Talamontes?
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Urdanda. All in favor?
Aye.
We're, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just realizing, a lot of these roads are on my road. Is there anything that I can do as far as brush that is...
Uh, most of these, ma'am, are just, uh, as far as, I guess, just part of the owners that are, that need to...
So nothing that you see that the county...
No, no, the rest of it is like, as far as like the one off of eighteen sixty-seven, it's just whatever they're carrying.
Okay. Yeah, because I see mine down the road as well, my way. Okay. Just letting you know, in case you ever do come across any issues, any of the areas that I cover, I'd appreciate some feedback if you see some issues.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Take care, Mr. Torres.
I have a...
Three, three point one five, discussion and appropriate action to accept donation from Cypress Creek Renewables for fighting equipment.
Motion.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Urdanda, and a second by Commissioner Talamontes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point one six, discussion and appropriate action to accept reimbursement check from Texas Forest Service on the amount of a thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars.
Motion.
What is this a reimbursement check for?
I'm sorry?
What was the reimbursement check?
Uh, for the, every year, we have to pay a, uh, insurance for the firefighters. So, uh, what we do is, once we, once we pay for the, uh, the invoice that's sent in, uh, we get back the invoice, and we send it to the Texas Forest Service. We apply for the, uh, insurance grant, and we get it awarded, and then they give us reimbursement check.
Awesome.
It's yearly that they do.
Awesome, awesome. Motion to her. Are you ready to have a motion?
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Urdanda, second by Commissioner Talamontes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point one seven, discussion and appropriate action. Approval to purchase two sets of type... Approval to purchase two sets of type of turnout gear for firefighter Melody Trujillo, one set of structured turnout gear, and one set of dual-purpose wow-lant extrication gear.
Yes.
Motion to, uh, Mr. Torres, on this?
You have a question? I have one. You have a question? Go ahead, before you make a motion.
You, you have your budget?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Yeah, this is gonna be from the operating side, so...
I would, um, I know why the purchase probably, because you don't have that size available. But I would, the question that I had is usually, how long do you wait whenever they come and join the department before you make purchases when they're needed for a certain size? I know that sometimes you can come in, you may have the sites available, does that happen?
Yes, ma'am, we do, but since, you know, the physique of the female...
Yes.
And then we do need a, we do need a new gear, because the old gear that we sometimes have do not, is not, uh...
Up to standard?
It's up to, yes, sir. Yeah, so, and then we just need, since she has a smaller physique, then we do need to, have to try to out there with some...
Something to keep her safe?
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a noble thing to stand up and to want assistance, especially, um, to go out there. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't doing it, um, I wanted to see if we did it for, like, every individual that have come through, or if we were cautious to make sure that we made sure that they kind of...
Yes, as long as we know that the, if, if we do have the gear that, uh, prior gear that does fit, and it's still in service, then we, you know, we can let them use that, so we get the funds to go ahead and purchase some brand new gears.
Okay. But this one is just because the turnout gear that you did have isn't up to standards for her safety? And so do these gear pieces?
And for her, for her size, yes, ma'am.
Because she's new?
Yes, ma'am, she's new, and then, of course, we don't, some of the, some of the gear that we have is just a little bit more...
It is, it is better?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? All in favor? Actually, I don't even have a motion.
Do you need to get any motion? Do you have a second?
I don't have a second, that's what it is.
A second?
I have a second by Commissioner Talamontes. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, ma'am.
Three point one eight, discussion and appropriate action. Monthly report from Victory Ambulance for the month of August twenty twenty five. I don't see a representative here from Victory Ambulance.
Motion to...
I have a motion to table by Commissioner Alonso Carmona?
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Urdanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
There was an inquiry on the court, Judge. Somebody just... No? They tried. Oh.
Three point one nine, discussion and appropriate action requesting a reduced rodeo rental agreement for section one, royalty choreography.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
So, thank you for letting us come again and ask for this. We wanted to have several weeks before we could...
You can adjust them, I can probably, we don't do it here.
So, my name is Bianca Reese, and I am here representing RCDC. Um, RCDC was created with the mission to provide the youth of Cruz Springs with a safe, structured, and inspiring space where they can discover their confidence, discipline, and passion for the art of dance and cheer. Dance and cheer are a more than movement to music. It is a sport that teaches perseverance, teamwork, athleticism, and self-expression. Skills that occur leave for, not only for cheer and dance, but for leadership, academics, and life. We know this is possible, but we know that we have support in this community, and we are still right over it. We've seen success here in our community from the individual times Ms. Esteban has come. She worked with the junior high kids team to work in class, and has taken my team to nationals to the one on a local stage. And she has had, has had students who have worked with her one-on-one that continue cheer and dance into the collegiate levels, which is, you know, a really great success, even from here in community states. Um, these young men and women are living proof that when you give the youth the opportunity, they rise to meet them, and they go farther than anyone has. What RCDC seeks to do is build upon successes and make them accessible to all children of Cruz Springs. We want to be a more than just program, and we want to be a lasting staple in the community. We are not here temporarily, we are here to bring, which strong enough to hold generations of students who will grow, achieve, and represent Cruz Springs with pride. That is why we are here today, asking for a partnership. Our rental agreement with the Dimmitt County and the Rodeo Arena would not simply provide us with the space to rehearse, it would give our students a home, it would send them a message that the community believes in them, supports them, and values their dreams. With your support, we envision RCDC becoming a positive and opportunity, a place where children grow in confidence, where families gather to celebrate their achievements, and where the broader community sees the impact of investing in its youth. Together, we can ensure that the next generation of national competitors, collegiate dancers, and future leaders begins their journey right here at home in Cruz Springs. This is more than a request for space, it is an invitation to partner with us in shaping the future that honors our past successes while creating new ones. We believe that with your help, RCDC can expand as a symbol of pride, opportunity, and empowerment for this community. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and your continued service to Dimmitt County. We look forward to the opportunity to create something lasting and meaningful together.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you bonded and insured?
Yes, yes, we are. I believe we have submitted a paperwork with a copy of our liability insurance.
And how often do you, you have somebody that makes sure that that's up to date and current at all times?
Yes.
I saw that you motioned, or you're requesting a fee of, basically, for the year, a thousand three hundred?
And you want four months?
Yes.
Oh, four months, yeah. It's...
Three hundred dollars a month, and a hundred dollar deposit.
Yes.
I think that this organization is no different than the baseball and everything else that we make accommodations, the four H and stuff, and as long as they have the added bonded insurance that protects the county, I feel like that's something very reasonable that we can do. Like, again, it's nothing different than all the other sports that the county supports, um, as far as baseball. You know, you know that we do things for other areas, so, um, I'm thrilled to have somewhere where little boys and girls can go and express, um, their passion for, for dance. So, uh, I will motion to approve for the... So I will motion to approve for the $300 a month with a $100 deposit.
Any questions? Go ahead.
I have a couple questions. One, are you all a nonprofit organization? So that would be the one major difference, Commissioner, just to clarify between some of the other...
But not necessarily, I know from the 4H, yes, sir, but not from the baseball.
Yeah, the...
Yeah, I understand, I know where you're getting with it. 100% the 4H, yes.
And I'm just trying to make sure that whatever action we take is applicable and is fair and consistent throughout. That's why I'm bringing this up. Most of, majority of the time...
You said that the baseball is nonprofit too, right? Is that what you just said?
My understanding, the baseball, the baseball league is a nonprofit organization, they're 501(c)(3) organizations. And that's why they've come up and requested special rates for the...
I think, I think we'll have to, yeah, I think we'll have to double check on that one if I'm not mistaken, but I do think that because it was the...
So, so...
I may be misunderstood from what I understood from him, because I do work with him at the part of the baseball.
And to clarify for you, Commissioner, my next question is, do you, as an organization, charge for your services?
Yes.
There you go. Baseball charges for the kid to come in and the child to come in, and it's a one-time fee for them to play during here, but they don't necessarily charge for the services of coaching and providing the baseball league.
So do you pay yourself as individual, or do you charge to cover costs?
We charge to cover costs for, that's for the classes. Individual would be like private lessons, but those are scheduled one by one. And usually during tryouts, season for cheer and dance teams, but for the classes, it's to cover costs.
To cover costs.
Do y'all get paid for the services?
With the one-on-one?
We, we, we ask coaches as employees, yes.
Right now, because you're saying the, the fees that you're taking in, you're doing it to cover costs or you're doing it to pay, do you take home the salary? Do you take home money from it whenever they get payment?
Alright, so whenever we get payment, all the money goes to Coach Esteban. Jessica has it, and we get paid, but it's like hourly, so I'm not paying myself if that money comes from.
That, okay. Okay, so that is a little bit of a difference. I thought that you guys were looking at funds to cover costs for everything, and that's what y'all guys were coming up with. Because when I read your theme, that is what it implied. I don't know if y'all guys took the time to read the...
Yeah, so I did a little research on this, in particular, Commissioner, someone, like I said, trying to be as fair and consistent as possible. However, the only reason that it is a concern to me, you know, what it offers, because you are established as a business. And with that said, if we were to take action today to give your business a special rate, that that would accommodate and open the doors to any other business to come in and request a special rate because they're considered a business, regardless of what type of business it is. And I, I'm one of the individuals that I feel that every case is a, each case deserves a, your, your special... The reason yours is special is because there's so many kids involved. That's what really affects this decision, to be honest with you. We're here to provide for the kids as much as we can, so it be on our legal standards. And because you are considered a business, it makes it difficult to approve a discount because you are a business. If you were a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization coming in and promoting this, by all means, it'd be a whole different scenario and way of God, in my opinion.
The way it is, it's a profitable business for you.
I, I don't...
On that, no, you know, again, we have nothing against each other, but the way y'all do pay yourselves, it does put us on a, on a buying ear. So we want what's best for the kids, but in a, in a way, it's putting more, like Commissioner said, we're going to open the door for anybody to come, and as this, a profitable business to come and ask for a discount.
I'm...
Have you ever tried to apply for, for a nonprofit?
No, I'm not in charge of RCDC, I'm just representing...
I represent it.
Our community's financial.
If, if I may ask, how long would, would, if you're looking to establish a contract, what would be the length of time of the contract?
Well, right now, this contract would be for the rest of September to December.
She's asking for a form one period.
To the, and, and what do you...
Hold on, give me a second, because I know that it's one hour, and if I'm not mistaken, after, it's even after hours. It's not even anything that would be scheduled for meetings or anything like that, because it's for... Between what times are you requesting?
Be from 5 to 9, because we have classes that start from 5:30 to 6:30, and 5:30 to 7:30. And it's so easy to clean up and make sure our spaces.
So you said 5 to 9 PM?
Yes.
Okay, so, see, that's where it can turn into an issue, because in, in essence, you'd be basically scheduling out Section 1, and that's Monday to Friday?
No, Monday to Thursday.
Monday to Thursday, okay. And we already have, I don't know, we need to get with the coordinator, because we already have organizations that use, for example, Section 1 that I know, the only reason I know is because the employees have to go and prep everything for 4H, MFA, just different other organizations that have come before us and requested. That are nonprofit organizations, and I want to make sure that it's not going to be a conflict.
It says that, and you're in the letter that they did cross-reference with the court coordinator, and that they did see that all the dates were available before they requested them.
Not the court coordinator, the events coordinator.
Oh, right, right, there.
Events coordinator.
And that's, and that's, like, precedents over the days they run, but we're willing to work around that.
I think that I'm still going to continue my motion to support it. I know that there is a little bit of funds that are getting paid for you, but I'm pretty sure that none of y'all guys are paying your mortgage or your rent on that salary. And I know that your heart is in the right place, and like I'm saying, I'm not completely sure about the baseball, so I won't misspeak because that individual isn't here to correct me if I, if I misspeak. But I do know that this is something that is beneficial to us, and I think that we're put in positions where we can help, and I'm willing to help in this situation, so my motion stands.
I have a motion by Commissioner Talamantes. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
I have a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, I don't know if we can legally do it, so I'm going to abstain.
I just feel that...
It's, it's, it puts enough predicament, but it's a business. If it were not a business...
It's a three-month trial period.
I understand, I can change, but it's, it's still considered a business. And when it's a business, it's a whole different effect. I mean, I wish Mr. Torres were here to kind of...
No, I, I know I don't get you, because you know what?
And I don't want to get...
I know, I know, I know, and I, I'm trying very hard, because I know that, I know that you have to have some pretty strong opinions to be saying that, because I do know that you do support and you do what you can where you can. Nobody is thinking that from Mr. Torres, nobody is. I just think that a lot of the times, we've based in turn to organizations that benefit us sometimes and that don't. And, I mean, I couldn't sit here in front of you guys and say that I haven't seen things that I don't agree with in other organizations that don't necessarily abide to their preference or to help them out. But I don't think that anybody is being malicious towards you, it's just a ground of not wanting to make a decision because legally.
Thank you. Your turn.
Show us a second.
I'm in the Deafosia, I graduated here in Cruz Springs, the past 2021. My favorite thing growing up was dancing, and the only thing available to us at the time was just our, through the school, which was our cheer team, they do mini cheer camps or mini dance camps. And that was always my favorite thing to look forward to in the summer. With RCDC, I feel we not only are just here to give a little step into the, into the cheer and dance world, what we're looking for is we want to build the team, and we want to take them to competitive levels. We want to take them, you know, to go compete at competitions and, you know, win, have them here in Curito and break back to Curizo. And I was part of the national team, so we went to Florida, and we represented Cruz Springs in Florida. If I'm not mistaken, 2015, 2016? That's when we went, so it was almost 10 years ago, we went to junior high. But, you know, that was a big step for us, and it really exposed us to the, to the true role of cheer and dance. And with RCDC, I feel like we are able to really take Curizo to another level with the cheer and dance industry.
Can we do, manager, Mr. Pedra, could you assist us with this? Do you, no way.
No, can't assist, that would be something the county attorney would need to do.
Have you, do you know of any other situation where we've ever made a...
No.
To assist...
A business for, for profit?
No, that's what I'm saying, I think you need to...
Look, we're going to, we're going to, well, I, I will bring it up to the county attorney and ask for his opinion. And by all means, I don't want you to walk away from here feeling that we as a court are not, or at least my part, I'm not trying to support what you're trying to do. I, by all means, I'd like to help as much as possible, as I have in the past, but I'm hesitant because we haven't done this in the past before, and I don't want to, I don't want to put ourselves in a predicament where we took action and we brought it shouldn't of a certain way, if you would understand. But I will speak to him, and based on what his recommendation is or his opinion is, I will reach out to your coordinator, because I do know who she is. I'll reach out to her and see if there's something that we can do as a court, as soon as I can get word.
Right now, it's a court which is...
They're just, it's just passed.
It passed?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yes, then we can move forward with it.
I was supposed to say, it was a, it's a, it's a three-month trial period is what I wanted to, to make sure. And given this opportunity as well, please make sure that any accommodations that they make, that they're willing to, that we go from there. We will continue to gather more information, Commissioner, and we will go from there. But like I said, I'm excited to see, I know that it's going to benefit many little girls and anybody in the community that wants to come out and join, I'm excited to see how many little ones you can inspire through this process, so.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
3.2, discussion and appropriate action, approval of property and casualty, 2025-2026 insurance renewal, Laverneia Insurance Agency. Morning, how are you?
Good. Well, has on this handout inside of the folder in the pocket on the left side, there's a, a new comparison from last year to this year. We do this comparison just to break down coverage, so not a lot of forms. The big thing to show is the auto at the bottom. That's the primary reason why the stringings have gone up in last year. There's been quite a few claims in that sector of insurance this year. Another thing is the professional liability and general liability. Again, it's, it's a lot of claim-driven, also, it's also with the construction cost for the property to build anything now versus five years ago, it's just way, so the premiums on property are steadily being increasing. We, we also increased some of the building values.
You said that there was an increase in the amount of claims that the county has submitted for vehicles? Is that what you just said?
Yes, ma'am, the claims in the past 30 years were tried and failed by the law. And it's...
It is substantial.
About 20%.
So what you're saying is that, in black and white, that we've submitted by 120% increase cars that have been wrecked?
It, and my building too, so if you get in a wreck and then a scene, that's part of it too. So it's, it's not just the property damage, but that, that's the problem with now versus five years ago. The claims are way worse than they were, and that's the reason why we're there.
Did you say, did you say they've been increased for the past three years or five years?
Well, we, we really tried it in the last three years, so that was a lot of loss on the, and that was 500, 500 value plus, 580.
580.
This is what you're saying, that has been claimed or...
$580,000 has been in claims.
Do we have a date breakdown of five departments?
No, ma'am, we, we had a loss ratio, so we have a loss...
Please report.
So, well, my office and Mr. Pedra can possibly get you, so...
We get, we get, I didn't want to do the HIPAA violations, because it has...
We had, we do, we do have the top of the place.
You, you, so when someone has a car accident or...
Okay, because you said that, because of HIPAA violations, does that mean that I can't see the list right now?
We, we have to go into executive session to be able to look at those who can't publicly denounce that information. But you can get, you can get access to it, I can give you access to it, so, I mean, you know the process that whenever there's a car accident, or when we get sued, the policy here in Dimmit County is to make a report with the judge's office, and then we submit it to Mr. Pedra, and then Mr. Pedra turns it over to the insurance company. And so I have a list of the departments that have either caused an accident or have damaged their vehicle that has caused us to submit a claim, but we can get you that information.
I'm looking for a breakdown, because, you know, our equipment has been up to date.
No, these are vehicles.
So this, I don't, I know that this is vehicles, but I'm asking, like, is it, is it due to, like, our, our equipment up to standard, or is this like, just human error?
A lot of it's human error.
A lot of it is human error?
Well, I don't want to necessarily say, exactly, I wouldn't say human error, I would just, I think, yeah, that's being, I wouldn't use that word, human error, it's just, there's individuals driving vehicles and you got to look at the, at the report as a justice and if...
And is these accidents, are they, do they clarify, like, if it was our fault, their fault, or is it the same regardless, the insurance goes up?
No, it does clarify, definitely, and that's why you also have uninsured mothers.
Correct.
And that's if you get in an accident, and you're not at fault, but they own the insurance.
And then it's still, it's still...
It still goes on laws, but others, I mean, do have coverage, but they have extra claims.
So I can tell you right now, without going into extreme detail, that a lot of the, the accidents and claims that have been submitted is correct, that is our fault.
The other thing to mention is the optional covers at the bottom. Normally, we do terrorism here, most of my counties won't, but it was something that, that my county has wanted a lot of.
I mean, you don't want to make that special, we're not really questioning people.
I, I can, so we, we can email the judge, and she can hear it, and I, I just don't, I don't know if you can...
No, that's fine, I don't, I definitely don't want to push you into something, I just, I'm fairly in this position, so a lot of the things, I'm kind of go with the motion and learn, motion and go as I, learn as I go, so. As far as my questioning, that's it, so you can continue going.
If you don't feel comfortable, what way do we need to approve?
Excuse me? October 1st.
Because I feel like we need time to really look at it and discuss it as a court?
Well, I mean, at the end of...
You can have it, but...
I mean, at the end of the day, Commissioner, this is to approve whether or not we want to go with this premium or not. I think where you're, where you're going to is more for like accountability purposes. I mean, for, for us to give you that information, is it, how's that, is it going to be detriment to your decision whether or not you want to approve that, this item today or not? Because essentially, by you getting the information as to who's causing these accidents or what department is causing these accidents...
So, hold on, so, because, let me just explain from my point of view again. Not even as a commissioner, as a person, if my insurance goes up and I see it at home, I want to review every single thing before I sign up for something else, because what you're telling me, you're, you're speaking to me, yes, it very well may be corrected and everything, but I want to be able to review it for myself. There's no way that me in my home, if I saw that my premiums got up, that I would approve for another premium or submit a payment without reviewing my documents. that I would approve for another premium or submit a payment without reviewing my documentation. So I will say wholeheartedly that I don't feel that I can make a decision today until we see it and we go over it. But I am just one person on this vote. Like I said, just because this is my first time going through this process doesn't mean that that is the situation of the entire court. Um, but yes, I will, um, sustain to not vote.
Do you want a motion to go into executive session?
I would appreciate it, yes, Judge.
So I will have a motion to go into executive session.
If I may, I'm sure also, I, I do understand, like, this is not completely claim driven. If you look at the report, those eleven vehicles added
Okay.
to the policy, which drives the auto policy up a little bit. And then, uh, if you look at the building cost, you are on a replacement cost insurance and the cost of construction now has gone up tremendously. So, that being said, this building burns down today.
Yeah.
Even if, you know, insured for four million, it costs six million to rebuild, you're gonna get the six million. So you're on a replacement cost versus, uh, you know, the actual cost value of the building.
I have a motion, my Commissioner Talamontas, to go into executive session. Is there a second? I'm gonna second that. Mrs. McDenny. At this time, it's eleven twelve, we will be going to executive session. It's twelve thirty-one and we are back from executive session. We are at item three point two zero, approval of property and casualty, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six insurance renewal. It's my distinct understanding that court, um, I will entertain a motion, but also putting on notice that due to the increase in the premium, due to the information submitted to the court, and the court is in receipt, and when I say the court, I include myself as the county judge and the commissioners present, um, that the court has come to a consensus that, given the increase in the premium, that the court at some point in the future will be taking actions to make sure that there is, um, accountability in terms of the hundred twenty percent increase of claims and looking into the origin of such claims and how they are occurring.
Judge, is it allowed to give a dollar figure amount of the increase?
Yeah, I believe he did earlier. And if you want to state that for the record, again, the increased dollar amount.
Point?
Uh, no, sir, the increase in the premium for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
It was about a hundred and twenty thousand?
Approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase.
It's more than that, yes.
So we're dealing with a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in increase and then we're dealing with about another five hundred and eighty dollars in claims?
So we don't have five hundred and eighty dollars? Five hundred and eighty thousand in claims.
So we're like at seven hundred thousand total?
So, so the total amount, Commissioner Talamontas, is seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-four cents. So if you subtract the previous premium from last year, which was six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and thirteen cents, that's the increase in terms of amount. What he's saying, as a period, we've increased a hundred and twenty percent, um, is what the increase is percentage wise. But in terms of the increase dollar wise from last year to this year, let me get you that exact number.
He says it's about twenty-two percent.
A hundred and twenty-seven thousand, zero, seven.
What did you present?
Oh, um, premium, no, not right by.
Yes, so there was an increase on the premium dollar, you're correct, of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seventy-nine dollars and eleven cents. That's how much it's increased from last year to this year. One thousand, I mean, excuse me, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand and seventy-nine dollars and eleven cents. And that does not include the optional coverage of terrorism, that's ten thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. That's an additional, an optional coverage that historically speaking, the county has also added into the policy. And the claims amount is approximately five hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. How much of the ten thousand? Well, no, what we're gonna be paying, what we're paying is gonna add seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-four cents plus ten thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven.
Okay.
So seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-four cents plus ten thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven is a grand total of seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-two and twenty-four cents.
So that's twenty-one? I just think for the amount that it is that we're dealing with, it's sensible to table it for now until the judge says.
Well, the thing is, is that, that's why I required as to the time frame, because we do have to submit it before October one. And so we don't have a commission report before then, so, um...
Would you, uh, warrant to have a special reading or a, I know it would, and the situation would be more complex, if you would be...
It wouldn't, it would not fall under emergency, it could fall under a special reading. My question to you, Commissioners, what in particular you want to, um, I guess, what other information are you requiring so that you can make a vote today?
I just feel that if we're gonna, if we're gonna approve it, it's, there's nothing on your hands, there's nothing, there's no more information that you can provide that insurance company can provide for me to come to a decision. I feel like you've done the part by giving us all the documented paperwork. I just feel that we need to have a policy in place to try to rectify the situation because it is an increase of money that's going out and there's nothing that's fixing the problem. Um, I know that, um, defensive driving is that something that's offered through the, through the insurance. If, you know, we have one set person, there's a lot of the things that I kind of want to look into to see what is it we can do to try to bring this down for next year. Um, because we aren't going to try to be financially conservative, this coming up here, that is our thing, go. Um, but I would agree that the court decides that it's okay, you want to go through that, I have no objection to doing that because it's nothing on their part that they can provide.
So I think to answer your question, Commissioner Talamontas, is, um, how valid concerns, and I agree with your concerns, that there has to be accountability and for us to find ways through our HR department and our auditors department to be able to implement policies that all departments and electors can adhere to so that they can assist us in decreasing the claims. Um, but I think that that's a separate issue and I think it's a separate, uh, policy and agenda item that we can put on the agenda. It's kind of, um, somewhat similar to when we have, um, the yearly, uh, health, where we give an incentive to our county employees, um, it's kind of like, you know, who can lose the weight or, or stay the healthiest. And all those are, are incentives that we do through the county so that they can decrease our claims also for the health insurance policy. So for this particular item in, in specific, it's more of, they've provided all the information that they have given us um, to see if we can make a, a decision regarding the increase and if we're in agreement with it and to, um, the subject of finding ways for us to hold our drivers accountable. I think that's something that we can most definitely sit down and talk to our HR department about. And then as a whole, um, decide and make policies that will assist us in moving forward the next year to try to decrease the amount of claims that we have. And when we have a decrease in claims, you also have, um, a way to maybe negotiating with the insurance company so that they don't charge us as much. So, um, I think for today's purpose, uh, it's a matter of approving this policy, the amount that they increased. And then I guess for the future, us finding innovative ways to get our employees, either through trainings or other, uh, incentives to try to decrease the claims.
I understand, Judge, I would agree. I would, um, will you put that on first and see what policies or, whatever, that we can use to, to, to...
I will entertain a motion at this time?
Sure.
Motion by Commissioner Lotokarmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Ludenda. All in favor?
Hmm.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your patience. Three point two one, discussion and appropriate action, approval of NW Group Battery Energy Storage System, BESS Project Appropriated, one nine five one seven, to perform to electrical permit with Demet County's. Good morning.
Morning. Morning, Judge and Commissioners, so...
Good afternoon.
If you don't mind, you can pick it up, uh, if you want, but if you don't mind for purposes of the record, can you please state your name for the record?
Yes, Kayu Gumar, NW Group, County Manager.
Kevin, give me your last name again.
Uh, it's Gumar, G A U.
G.
G A U.
U.
M.
M.
A.
R. R.
E.
Gumar.
Her name is Joslyn Morales.
Joslyn.
Morales.
Morales. Baroc.
B A R O C.
Okay, thank you. Did you get that, Ms. McDenny? Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. Uh, so we are NW Group, we are battery energy storage companies. Uh, we operate eight hundred megawatts, uh, of, of batteries developed and operate, uh, in Europe. And we have ten megawatts in operation in the, in Texas currently. And we are currently requesting your approval to move forward with, uh, the electrical permit for a one megawatt project that we're looking at in the county.
And where exactly, Mr. Gumar, is the project located?
Yes, um, so the project is...
It's unfortunate, right, that, oh, down, down?
Yeah, I don't know, it may be work.
Uh, the project is located outside of the city limits of Curazo Springs, but it's still within the county. So it's right off the intersection of, uh, one eighty-five, I believe, and twenty-three sixty-seven.
One eighty, one eighty-six?
Yes.
One eighty-six.
My Commissioner here.
Oh, to your yard?
I do, sir.
By Commissioner Ludenda's yard.
Area.
And so you're before this court today asking for a permit for the electrical?
Correct.
Is this the only area that you're setting up this facility in?
Uh, we currently have a lease with the owner, Ector Science, and we have a future project that we're considering in Curazo Hill, which would also be outside of the Curazo Hill city limits, but we will look to that in the coming years.
As to that scene, three locations, Katerina, Rose Court, and...
Big Wells.
Yes. So those are some examples that we found that have, um, that are in operation or that are in the current queue with Burcott to develop and start construction. So those are, the Katerina one is a ten megawatt project, which is already in operation and has gone through the approval with Burcott and the Public Utility Commission of Texas. And then there's another larger project, which is in Big Wells, which I believe they haven't begun construction, but they're, they've asked for the electrical, the electrical position with Burcott. And so they're a one hundred and one megawatt project.
Environment safety is this?
Uh, we've gone through different, uh, criteria and standards. So for example, with the fire safety, we've met all of the international standards and done testing. It comes with fire suppression, it doesn't cause any type of pollution or contamination.
No radiation, not hood or anything like that?
No. And then it also comes with an interior container that, you know, if anything, if they, if they were to, for example, if firefighters are... Uh, so again, it does come with fire suppression and everything already installed. It has a battery management system, which is on twenty-four seven. If anything were to happen, it would alert us or our monitoring service and it would set off the appropriate actions that need to be taken.
Will this be also located within our dispatches? Some jurisdiction or how would it work if, if an emergency pops up, by the time they contact you?
Yes. Uh, so we do also have an emergency operation plan developed with how we plan to actually manage different types of emergencies, whether it's manmade or weather related or, of course, fire.
My question is, would it be directly involved with our jurisdictional dispatches? Say you have a fire that you go, would it be able to warn them, invite them, tell the, whatever responders they need?
Yes, it would be because of the twenty-four seven monitoring. Then you have a list of call for a project that we, the fire department, uh, within the area of the project.
And is there any training that you would provide for responders?
Yes, and that's part of the OP and there would be annual fire drill as well done for the location.
I know that over here it says these in Demet County and there's three different areas. We're talking about Katerina, Big Wells, and Curazo Springs. None of these are yours, there's just similar projects that have gone up in the area?
Yes, correct.
Um, I know that this company doesn't belong to you, but you're right, I'm gonna say megawatt?
Yes, so it's, um, it basically means like how much it produces, it charges and discharges in electricity. So the bigger it is, usually the more batteries they have as well.
The bigger footprint, right?
Is there any safety concern with going up to a certain amount of megawatts? Like especially where there's, there's people around, like is there any cap that you guys try to stand on? Because what, what was your proposed for your facility?
So our facility would be one megawatt.
Like one megawatt?
One, one megawatt, which is one container, a forty by ten foot container, which would contain all the equipment within the container and be connected to the distribution electrical network.
Okay. And then the first question that I had was, is there any safety concern with human vegetation, livestock, any of those things with an increase of megawatts? Is there a certain standard that you guys try to save up?
Uh, so there is no standard for a safety standpoint. There is certain standard in terms of air cut, in terms of permitting that you need if it's above ten megawatt or below ten megawatt.
So we have one in Big Wells that's coming in at a hundred and one point forty-one megawatts?
Yes, and that one isn't ours, but we've seen that they're still actively in the queue with Burcott of finishing their approval to go to construction.
I feel that that's a little concerning, um, to the court, not to y'all guys, considering either say that ten is kind of relaxed. Or Big Wells is expecting a hundred and one.
The, the ten megawatts, uh, it's an air cut permitting regulation, right? You have, you can stay below a certain limit, you have certain permit that you, you need to meet with, uh, TDSP, so AP and on core center point. And above ten megawatts, you need to go with air cut for certain permitting. So I, I cannot speak to that big well project, but I know from a permitting standpoint, there's differentiation in terms of allowance of power.
I, I know there have been some concerns with this lithium batteries, um, when they go off. And sometimes it takes extra suppression to extinguish the fire or... Is there a containment area that you have where the acid or whatever will not go out of the area? Or, I know it's gonna go into the ground, but unfortunately we can't, at, at some time. Because I've seen it also, like, I don't know, in California, when they add, their lithium batteries go off in the middle of the way. It took them at least three days or four to contain that fire. By the time all those batteries burned out, uh, and we got that to, uh, three, uh, both that we subscribe to. And my concern is, uh, what is the safety for, for lithium fires?
Well, usually our company recommendation is that you just let it burn, but we do understand that there...
You're saying that you have suppression here, so what kind of suppression do you all have?
The suppression that we have...
Is it CO2 or...
It's an aerosol that would dispense... It's an aerosol that would dispense above the batteries and take out anything that has to do with the fire, and then there's also vents that would deal with any of the smoke or gases that are produced.
Normally when that happens, that we have an whole fire or any type of hazardous, right? We always want to call the rural commission, T C Q, to monitor the smoke and, which way the wind was, if it's gonna be a concern to our residents that are in the nearby area.
And to you, to your question, there is a container at the bottom of the battery to collect anything, so it wouldn't be going to the ground, dissipating the ground, it would be collected into that bottom container.
And then we also have a fire hose connector that's on the exterior of the box itself, so if a fire department does want to connect and apply water, they can, and any of the water that's applied would be caught in the internal container as well.
I have a question for you, because we have been seeing, um, this, I mean, you're showing us three of the different areas. What purpose does this serve?
One of the.
Yeah, so, so the, the purpose of it is help stabilize the grid system, distribution grid system.
Electrical grid?
Electrical grid, right? Because this battery will be directly connected to the distribution network, to the three base power that you have, so we help able in terms of when supply and demand, in terms of load and generation, helps smooth it, smooth things out by adding the battery, be able to inject as needed on the system. And it also helps with frequency regulation, right? Which is a area that might cause blackout in some cases, so the battery will be able automatically and instantly to either inject into the system or, you know, discharge from the system in order to, uh, help, uh, regulate the frequency of the network. So he has a, he has the biggest purpose for the whole grid to help with grid resiliency.
What makes our area down here in Dimmitt County such a prime location for these facilities that are going up?
So I, I'm not gonna talk about the big wells, the megawatts, I'm just gonna talk about ours, uh, so, so we look at areas that's, um, along the distribution network and, and close to the substations, um, and area usually that there's some land that's available for it as well, private land, and Dimmitt County is one of the, the area that has all those criterias are met within your area.
How many other areas around the surrounding us do also fit those criterias?
So, so right now, we have, uh, we have projects in multiple counties across the area, we have projects in, also in Preo County as well, that we, we're gonna plan to continue developing.
Free, Preo County?
Yes. And we have over two hundred projects in the state of Texas within here, but yes.
So do you look for rural areas, like?
So rural areas is, um.
Like do you have one in the city or?
So we, we have some in the proximity of Houston, proximity of Dallas as well, yes.
What question?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Are y'all monitored, uh, for, are y'all monitored through T C Q? So do y'all have to, uh, so then I, for a permit would like to, to go on with this project, or see from T C Q Texas in the state?
Um, so, so right, right now, the, the only on the permitting side would be everything ready to air cut and the electrical.
That's right, right, but, but what I'm asking is, it doesn't matter if it's air
cut, who it is, like, for example, like a water well, they're gonna grow a water well, the property owner, doesn't matter what he's gonna get for his status, submit a permit to the state, the state regular.
We don't, we don't have the permitting requirements right now with T C Q.
So you're, you're not monitored by T C Q, is that your answer?
They're, they're not, what he's saying is they're not required by T C Q to get a permit?
That's, that's the answer, you're not.
So I think that the biggest concern from what I gather from my colleagues is that the commissioners is, there's a very valid concern in regards to the health and safety of the constituents that we have, in essence, you know, the rise of cancer, um, the rise of other illnesses, and so I think that there's, and correct me if I'm wrong, commissioners, but I think the main concern here is the impact that this battery storage will have on our, our constituents and obviously their families and their livestock, if there's livestock around, um, and I think that's a very valid concern to have. As we all have seen, there's been a huge increase in, um, energy storage here in Dimmitt County, uh, the solar panels, and so, um, it's always important for us to gather all the information so that we can make a conscious decision that's gonna be in the best interest of our constituents, because that, obviously, at the end of the day, we're here to represent them and to make sure that we make decisions for our county that's in the best interest of our constituents, and so I think that that's, uh, concern here that I think the commissioners are posing today, um, in regards to the safety and the hazard concerns, um, that this may generate. I do understand, I've, I've read your, your package and I've thoroughly dissected it, and I do see that in terms of the electromagnetic fields that you're assuring this court that this, um, JV box or the electromagnetic fields emitted by this JV box are give or take plus or minus five, um, hertz from the sixty, correct? Is that what you put on there? And typically, a standard frequency of a household appliance ranges from fifty to sixty, um, to include your TVs, microwaves, gaming systems, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Um, so I think that's where Commissioner Delamontes' concern was, is in the upcoming construction that you guys are trying to put in Dimmitt County for Big Wells, it shows a hundred and one point four one megawatts, where you guys are saying yours is gonna be one megawatt, and the current one in operation in Catarina is nine point nine, so I, I think it suffices to say that the huge discrepancy in numbers, that one's astronomically higher than the other, I think is putting this entire project in question, am I correct, Commissioner?
I would, I would think so, I just think that there, there, there's just a lot of errors going to it, and I would like to see like the lost, the long-lasting impact on, on the ground, really. It's happened to us before, Walfield came through it and, uh, go that, and I just don't want the same situation to occur, to happen. I wanna make sure that we're protecting our land and our people, other than people that wanna continue generations on our ground in Dimmitt County. I, I wanna say I've heard of, of your company before, ISS Mining, correct?
Uh, no, we're NW Group.
Okay, NW, okay, the next one is, is, okay, um, no, I have not heard of. Honestly, Judge, I feel like if this is something that's very great in the area, especially if there's another facility that's ready up, I think that it's something that we should very cautiously, um, research. And make sure that we're making the right decisions, because if we have one operating, and then I'm not too sure where we are in the Big Wells location, with a hundred and one, and you add another one, that's a lot in just Dimmitt County. How long has the one in, in Houston and Dallas and those areas? How long has those have been up, and have y'all seen any negative impact?
So, so the ten megawatt to have in operation is in, in West Texas? Uh, has been in operation since July twenty twenty-three. We haven't seen any, any impact, localized impact to it.
Do you have any facilities that are close to us that are up and running?
Uh, the ten megawatt in, in West Texas would be the closest one today.
The land that, um, basically all you need from Commissioner's court is approval for the electrical invention, other than that, nothing else is in your control, correct?
In your, in your control?
Well, like.
That's correct.
I feel like if it's a decision that we're gonna continue to make, Judge, to vote on these things, we really need to take the time as a court to log and inspect one of these facilities, to get visual on exactly what it is that we're dealing with. And that is just my opinion on this matter, I'm not too sure how the rest of the court feels on this.
Just taking you out in Preo County?
We have, we have sites in Preo County, we don't have, yes, we don't have, we don't have that built yet. We don't have the product on the ground there.
So you don't have, and then, uh, West Texas is the closest one that you have?
In operation in Texas, yes. I mean, the, the other seven hundred and ninety megawatt are in Europe, which may be a little further.
Typically, how high do you do each facility within your company?
Sorry, can you repeat your question?
The megawatts, like typically, no matter like where you are, you usually go up to nine, you should try to keep it at one. What is the comfortable range that y'all guys, that your company proposes when you're bringing up a facility?
The, the one megawatt is the product that we're trying to develop, the one in West Texas, which is, uh, ten megawatt or nine point nine five is more of the exception.
And the use of that's feeding to the grid, and the last question that I have to you is that down here, we tend to suffer from blackouts, and sometimes they last for a few days. Is that something that would be beneficial to help us where you would cut down that time process?
So it will, it would benefit the whole grid in terms of blackout? I cannot speak necessarily to localized blackout and, and what happening in this area and tell you, that's how to prevent that from happening.
But if you're feeding the juice in from our area in Dimmitt County, would it help restore our life in this area?
That would be a question for A P. I mean, we have the option to have, uh, black start on those facilities, but there would be a, an A P.
A P.
A P, a question. They would have the option so that megawatts would be there available for them, how they decide to use it, uh, because they are the maintenance and they are the provider of the grid, right?
So all you do is?
So we can inject and charge on the grid at different times, but in the case of a blackout, at that point, there would be an A P discussion about, do we want a remote start with the energy available, those batteries, et cetera.
So you control injection?
We control injection discharge on, on regular basis, when everything, the service is operational, but if there's something happening to circuit or local blackout, that would be an A P decision what to do.
But it's possible.
Yes, the functionality is there for them to do so.
Other questions?
Excuse me.
How much time do you need on this? On this project?
Meaning?
He need, how much, how much time do you need, your, is there, is there a deadline in regards to when you need to have the permit approved by this court?
Uh, so that would be, the decision to put those in service would be late twenty-six, early twenty-seven.
Say that again, Mr. President.
To put it in service would be late twenty-six, early twenty-seven.
But in regards to when do you need the court's approval to get you the permit in order for you guys to be able to facilitate this project? Is there a deadline that you have in regards to the permit?
Uh, by, by the end of year, by the end of this year.
By the end of December?
Yes, by the end of this year.
I feel like time to research and also to be, because like, so all of these facilities is a question.
Is there any way that, and I don't wanna sound facetious, but is there any way that perhaps your company can give the court a? A tour or a, um, ride along, if you will, of the facilities or where you are anticipating to have this project?
You mean the one that's currently in service or a similar product or the one that would be?
I think, I think it'd be great for this court to be able to take a small field trip down to the one you have currently in service, and then for this court to also go and look at the poss, or the potential area in which you are wanting to set up for this current permit.
Uh, we, we, we can look into it, we can look into it, I mean, there will be, so the, the site, I think, is about a couple of miles from, from here, right, from this courthouse.
You're talking about the one in Catarina?
No, the one in Catarina isn't ours, um, but there are.
You're talking about the one in, in Midland, in West Texas, where you have the other one currently?
So that's the one in service?
That's the one I was talking about?
The one in service?
Yes.
Uh, the one in service is Saragossa, Texas, which is south of Pecos.
Cause it might be hard to pull a teeth and nail here for Commissioner's court to.
It's Saragossa, Texas, south of Pecos, so you take, um, Bemidne, you take south, yeah. It's about thirty, I would say thirty minutes south of Pecos. Sorry.
Oh, no, I'm just putting it on the record, it might be hard, like, pulling teeth in here to get the Commissioner's court to approve for our mileage and the else to drive to Midland for a field trip.
Look for people who would be justified to make sure they're making the right decisions on their behalf, so I feel like the people wouldn't mind you to use some time with us to make sure.
We can organize a, we can, we can look at organizing a visit. Yes. And as far as the, the site that we asking for fire permit, that site is, um, is just a few miles from here.
I'm gonna go ahead and motion to table, meaning the review of a, in, a working facility and, and, I mean, where you, where you would wanna put it up to, honestly, I think all these other areas, we as a Commissioner's court need to, um, take the time to go there and, you know, join together forces to make sure that y'all may see something that I don't see, especially Commissioner, they're not working in the utilities department. I'm gonna go ahead and motion to table.
Second.
That you're saying, because Commissioner Ludenda's smarter than us. Uh, motion by Commissioner Delamontes, oh, I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ludenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I would respectfully request, um, if you can get with our office, um, at the county judge's office, so that we can organize or, so we can facilitate that, that, um, travel, yes, thank you, to, to drive to, um, Midland or to Saragossa, so that we can look at those facilities and that we can anticipate a date in which all the commissioners and the judge are available, and coordinate that together and get a consensus on when we can all go and the logistics of it, if you don't mind, please.
Yes, of course.
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Three point two two, discussion and appropriate action, introduction and requesting state grant support for ISS Mining One LLC.
One judge, one commissioner.
Yeah.
Our good afternoon.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, Commissioner, Judge, in the interest of.
If you don't mind, um, your name for the record, please?
My name is Thomas Blake.
Thomas Blake?
Blake, with an F, like.
Oh, Blake.
For, yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thomas Blake.
Alan Parker's Charles Clement.
Charles Clement?
Clement.
Oh, Clement. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Glad to be here today. So, um, we are currently planning to acquire, make offer on a ranch this in Dimmitt County, just outside of town, a ranch on Intata.
The ranch what?
Ranch on Intata. Uh, it's a fifty-two-hundred acre ranch, uh, it's currently employed for, uh.
Do you mind?
Big, no, no, I'll be happy. It's currently employed, uh, for big game hunting. It's, it would be our intention to develop approximately twenty-five percent of that ranch into a A I hosting data center for computers, um, and to leave the rest of the ranch undeveloped and still viable for hunting.
Are, are you purchasing the ranch or leasing it?
We'd be purchasing it, yes, and we, we've made an offer to purchase it at this time.
And where's that at, Commissioner Ludenda or?
Going to the Chappaqua, uh, Catarina?
Going towards Aradon?
No.
Oh, the Chappaqua on Artesia Wells?
Yeah, down there.
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
Going towards Artesia Wells?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, I apologize.
No, and, and so, in, in interest of folks' time, I mean, we did bring in deck and we did come from the East Coast, I'm happy to take as much time as you want, but I'm also sensitive to people's time, and it's been a long day. So let, let me cut to the punchline, and then you back me off and tell me what additional information you'd like to have, and we're happy to accommodate that. So the, the punchline is that there, to build a facility like this for one point two billion dollars, it should bring approximately a hundred direct full-time jobs to this area, and should bring another six hundred jobs indirectly, that is, butchers and bakers and candlestick makers that would sell things to the people that would be earning, uh, salaries from the, from the site.
Mr. Blake, can you?
Go ahead, Judge.
I, I know in a, in abundance of caution, and also because you're being considerate of our time, but explain to me again, you would be bringing an A I facility, or what is it?
Yes, ma'am, a data center that would host computers, that would be focused on, uh, creating A I capacity, artificial intelligence capacity, and it would be connected to the internet, and so that would be usable for people around the world. But the benefits to Dimmitt County are a couple. One is, we would be required to bring fiber in from both. One is we would be required to bring fiber in from both, uh, Laredo and from San Antonio. And we understand that, uh, the commission's already approved some efforts in that direction. We would love to partner with those folks that you've already approved or, uh, do it ourselves. Uh, in addition, we would also have to generate power onsite. In fact, the folks that were just here a moment ago, uh, might be an interesting partner for us. Uh, because a data center has to have, uh, high quality, uh, and essentially uninterruptible power. And we would do that by both generating our power onsite as well as having backup power onsite. And one of those things could be battery power.
So the jobs you would actually, they would, they would be in person here in Dimmitt County?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
And so let me ask you a question. Are you asking, are you asking for tax payment? What are you asking from this court?
So tax payment would be part of it, but much more broadly than that. Uh, we would like to partner with the, with the county, for instance, on going to both the state and federal government, uh, for assistance to bring that fiber here. In exchange, we would, we would overbuild that fiber from our perspective so that the county would have access to some of the capabilities within that. Similarly, uh, we would need, um, to build a generating capacity onsite. And we would want to partner with the county on application to, uh, the Water Board and the Texas, uh, Commission on Environmental Quality. Making sure that everything was in alignment with regulation and consistent with what the county wanted, uh, built internal to the boundaries of county.
So is your project going to require a high amount of water usage?
Correct. Yes, ma'am, there will be some water, uh, usage associated with that.
The wells onsite.
And so is that going to affect the Curizo aquifer?
The, the current wells onsite need our requirements.
Yes, sir, there's already six wells drilled on, uh, Ranch on Cantada. And one of the wells has sufficient approved capacity for what we would need.
Do you know what's in it?
It's, uh, thirty thousand gallons an hour.
Thirty thousand?
No, we did not need that much, by the way, but that's what that well is drilled for.
Each one?
No, ma'am, ju, uh, we're just aware of the capacity of what we've been able to verify, but we do know that there are six wells onsite.
So how much water would you be utilizing? Cause I see here three to five hundred gallons.
Yes, ma'am, it would be three to five hundred thousand gallons a day. Um, to size that for you, similar facilities that are built in, say, Austin, um, would be about three times to four times that amount of water. We've designed our system to be very ecologically and environmentally sound. Um, and to do that, we use this closed loop system rather than open loop system. So you don't open for evaporation, you cool, re-cool the water and reuse it to the maximum extent possible.
So it's a recycled water?
Yes, ma'am.
For recycling of water?
Yes.
What's your question, Commissioner Godwin?
I see that you got pictures of some solar panels?
That it will.
You're gonna be doing some of those?
That's part of the power production.
Because I have a concern on the solar panels.
Please, go ahead.
Uh, the one that we have here outside on, on Dimmitt County, on eighty-five, we have quite a bit of fires from here. And.
So is your intention that the solar cells themselves are causing?
No, but it takes, it takes the vegetation and fire and, uh, it takes.
The, the fields create a heat thing.
Yeah.
One of those.
That's one of my concern on the solar panels.
How many?
And, and the reason why I'm, I'm saying this is because sometimes when we get, get hail storms and stuff like that, it damages those panels.
Yeah.
Those panels are not replaced within, I don't expect them to be replaced by the next day. But if it, when you have three or four hundred that are out, that is a concern.
You're a hundred percent right, Commissioner.
From there it chokes out and then it drops whatever heating source into the grass. And I don't know how you're gonna manage the vegetation there, but it takes off and from a thirty-minute fire, it turns out to be three or four hours. Because you gotta go through every single.
Yes.
Uh, aisle just to try and catch up with the fire.
So let me just tell you real quick, Charles Clement is my partner in this and he has installed hundreds of megawatts of solar and let him answer that question.
Sure, so it, it's, we're doing it a little bit different. What you're used to is a PPA, Power Purchase Agreement, where a developer such as myself comes in, creates an agreement with ERCOT. And I put a hundred megawatts out and he pays me for the power of course, right? We use our power, so we're an island system. So if those panels are not working, if there's a damage to the system, I have to fix it immediately because it's affecting my bottom line. I might get the power I'm, from that solar system.
Because then we can't provide the hosting service to our customers, yeah.
But as far as the vegetation, there's a couple of methods we've used and to be honest, the easiest is deploy a ton of goats.
And how many employees you said they was gonna hire?
We would have approximately a hundred direct hires onsite.
That with the complete?
That's after completion, yes, sir.
Built?
Yeah, while, while some construction would be approximately four hundred.
Uh, basically, much more, or perhaps.
Yeah.
But he's asking about after the project's been completed?
After around a hundred, approximately.
Over here we have two or three, and that's kind of hard.
Two or three what?
He's, he's talking about the, I don't know, your gentleman.
The people that take care of the solar panels.
It's not just the panels, though. That's for our company is, is AI.
That's what I'm saying, Mike, I, I know I'm asking the question differently, but.
No, I hear what you're saying.
Just to make sure that there's a good, if whatever the court decides to do with this, I just want to make sure we do leave with.
So part of, so part of their project, Commissioner, part of their project is, is includes panels, but it's also other systems in there? So they'll have, it's not just solar panels?
No, I understand because I see some with me.
I understand your question to be more about how do you find the talent?
Yeah.
That, that was my question. What job qualifications are you gonna be looking for in these a hundred individuals?
Yeah, and so let me give you a broad spectrum of things and then I want to tell you how we think we can address that. You, you will have folks that have to tend solar panels, but you'll also have to, have people that run gas turbines, people that are employed in maintaining computers. People, people that are employed in maintaining, uh, internet security for the, you know, IT security for the data center. You'll have folks that are managing all of those people, so you have approximately a hundred people in a wide variety of jobs. For the, uh, tax payment, that's part of this package that we've, uh, we've, uh, prepared for you. Uh, one of the, one of the requirements is that we hire thirty, thirty-five percent of local talent. We recognize that some of that local talent may not exist as is. So you'll also see in the packet a provision that we would like to partner with you to apply to the state for grants for training to the local community college. So we can take local folks and train up their skills so that it could be employed by the data center.
The thirty percent, is that based on the a hundred or the six hundred?
It's based on the hundred, ma'am. The six hundred wouldn't be necessarily employed by the center, but when you create, um, a data center that has an average salary of about eighty thousand dollars a year, um, what that means is they spend that into the local economy and then they, they buy things at restaurants and they buy things at stores and so on. So the typical economic development multiplier is about six to one.
So from the hundred people that are going to be employed, not just to bring up because of six hundred is why is the, the construction fees a bit? Um, from the hundred people that are going to be employed, thirty percent of them are going to be local. Um, and you also want to apply for grant funding and resources to make sure that we're giving the people the opportunity to qualify for these job positions?
Yes, ma'am, that's a hundred percent true. And what I want to be clear on, we're not asking for the commission's money or the county's money in that regard, but we would like to partner with you in asking the state for some money for those grants.
That's correct. And then, uh, I know that you said that there are solar panels that we need to be tend to, you're also getting ready for managers, our supervisors for the field and then AI. Uh, you said, what was the last thing that you said?
So there'd be people that would, uh, both maintain computers and also work in IT security. Because when you're connected to the internet, you guys have your own IT staff here that can tell you, you get people with ill intent from the world trying to get into your systems.
And will these employees be on local or will they be like?
They'll be onsite.
No, ma'am, these will be onsite. Yes, ma'am, we're, we're not intending to remote people in here. This is very much to be viewed as a partnership in economic development.
So you mentioned the water usage, uh, some, some Texas here, we really get rid. And my concern is how much of it would be percentage loss from evaporation?
So that's actually why it's a closed loop system rather than an open system, sir, is to, is to minimize that evaporation to the maximum extent possible. We recognize that water is a valuable resource here and we would want to treat it value.
And, and this is a standard problem that every hyperscaler runs into. And all the science is focused on making it less water intensive to, to get these things down. And correct me if I'm wrong, but when you were doing them for Langley, you drastically more water than you do now.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. In fact, the, the last site I did was completely air cooled and those can be done completely air cooled. The difference between what I did before and what we're doing here is AI, by its very nature, is more energy intensive and therefore more heat, uh, generative. And so it's more heat dense and so you gotta just engineer around that. But to the same extent, you want to make, like I said, that's, that site is already permitted and has wells for, for water in excess of what we would need. So we would not come back to and ask to drill more wells, but we, we would have to work with the Water, uh, Board to make sure that what we were extracting was within their, within their regulations.
How many facilities do you all have up? I know it's a project.
So this would be a new project for a new company. Charles and I have newly partnered on this, but each individually, I've done seven data centers and he's done hundreds of megawatts of solar. And we've got one other partner that's not here today that's done, um, what are called CHP, Combined Heat and Power Plants, all over the globe.
So Andy, can I ask you a very simple and straightforward question?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Um, what is it that you're asking of the court today?
So, um, I think it would be three things. Uh, one would be, uh, to direct county staff to work with us on an MOU that cover all the things in this document. Um, memorandum of understanding to say, yes, we should work on these, these six categories of things. And each category, there's two or three things, about ten or fifteen things. So I recognize that's not going to get done today. But also a resolution from the, from the county saying that Dimmitt County is, is interested in this and supportive of it. And I'll, and I'll tell you what, what the reality of our situation is.
Support for purposes of the grant that you're trying to?
Well, I mean, we, yes, ma'am, we do need your, your permitting from you, so.
Eventually it would be, our building permits, just not additional wells, I want to be clear, yeah. So, um.
And your third, please?
Um.
Tax payment.
No, that would be actually a good part of the MOU, but, uh, I wouldn't expect that you guys would, would approve a tax payment today based on the information, the standard information we've given you. Um, I would expect that we would work with staff, they would ask us some penetrating questions. We would come back to you in two weeks or three week, or a month and, and say to you, here's what we and the staff have worked up and then ask you to approve that. But the reality of our situation is that you're always raising money for projects, in this case, one point three billion dollars. Uh, what our investors need to know is that at least in this case, Dimmitt County is not opposed to what we're doing. That's a really big thing because there are some places, I'll, I'll tell you, uh, at the state of Texas level, they just passed Senate Bill Six. Senate Bill Six, um, is a really interesting bill from our perspective because it looks at, uh, other data centers as what I would call parasitic loads. That is, they draw power out of the grid. Our, our proposal is not to do that at all, but rather to overbuild the power production capacity. And to have Dimmitt County act as a net exporter of power, um, which would be good for your tax base, but it would also be good for your power, uh, stability. Ma'am, you mentioned earlier in the last presentation about, uh, the lights going out sometimes for a day or two, particularly, I think, in the summer. Um, that's true in this particular case, where the last gentleman wasn't able to answer that question definitively. We would make your grid more stable here. Uh, we would be exporting directly to ERCOT. On a good day, we'd be able to export as much as three hundred eighty-five megawatts, which is more than the county by itself uses. Uh, but I'm estimating that, but we have a pretty good estimate on, uh, if you have eight thousand people in the county roughly, we can make some good estimates as to how much power usage that is and it would make, uh, Dimmitt County a net exporter of power.
And Mr. Blake, just to, um, confirm or clarify, you said you will be under the discretion of TCQ and the Water Board District, is that what you said?
TCQ, the Water, uh, Commission, uh, ERCOT themselves is your grid operator. Uh, there's about the EPA, uh, there's about fifteen different organizations that we would have to be responsive to, ma'am, to build a facility like this.
In regards to, I know you mentioned that you would be using approximately twenty-five percent of this ranch to conduct and facilitate this project and the other seventy-five percent would be utilized to maintain and keep habitable for hunting, correct?
Yes, ma'am, and it's, it's important to note.
How many acres is this ranch?
Fifty-two-hundred-and-twenty-five, I believe. It's important to note that, and as, um, Commissioner Carmona, Carmona pointed out, this property abuts the, um, Wildlife Management Preserve. Um, and so it's an integral part of that, yeah.
So in regards to, because it abuts, um, that Texas state property, it won't affect the habitation?
No, it shouldn't.
At the, at the, um, help me, okay, what's the name of it again?
At the Chappa Run.
At the Chappa, the Wildlife Management there?
No, currently it's high fenced and the, the ranch itself has some species that are indigenous, but it also has a couple of species that are not indigenous. It has Russian boars on it and it has, um, sable antelope. Um, and the idea would, I think, to be not to get invasive species to interact. And we would not only keep the high fence that's already there, but we would probably improve upon it because we have a security need ourselves for people, with intent on computers or whatever.
Judge Shane? Well, can you go into a little bit in detail on what, I know you said the Indian County staff. What is exactly that you're requesting that the staff, county staff help with?
Well, it's not so much help us as it is.
When he says county staff, Commissioner, the key means, um, for us to be able to negotiate in regards to the MOU, not like your employees actually go and help it.
Yeah, exactly, Judge, and that would be that they would represent the county at the table, we would sit with them and we would negotiate with that MOU should and could contain and what it shouldn't contain.
What's the deadline for it?
So we've currently made an option, uh, offer on the ranch itself and that's got a thirty-day timeline to it. And we recognize that you guys only meet every two weeks. So if we could get a resolution to, to direct the county lawyer to meet with us regarding this object and to negotiate that MOU over the next two weeks, we would come back to you in two weeks with a, a presentation from both county staff and ourselves to jointly say, we think this is a doable thing. Or not, but one way or the other, we need to drive to a resolution pretty quickly before we lose option on, on the ranch.
I feel like, um, I think it's very interesting. I would definitely want to learn more about it and look into it as we go. And I thank you also for giving us time to consider and do our own research. It's not something that we have to make a decision on right now. I greatly appreciate that because making these decisions are difficult because we have an entire body of consultants that we have to pay into consideration when we do these things. Um, I see passion when I'm looking at your business, so I see that you're keeping the livestock on and you're, you're doing things. I think that this is very close to both of you guys and we can see that very much. Um, I think as far as the taxation, it would be one of the only things that I feel a little bit wary of. I feel like that is something that I would be willing to consider after a year's operation. And we've received data that there are actual thirty percent of our residents that are being employed. Because it has been a situation where we're told that, that then it gets really hard enough to say that it's not challenging sometimes to find employees that meet the criteria of what it is that you're looking for. Um, but I would want to make sure that if I am giving the tax payment provision, that we are receiving that thirty percent of employees employed in this, uh, Dimmitt County area. Um, but that is the only concern I think I have as of right now, that I would like y'all guys to go back and think of. Um, trying to figure out ways to make sure that that is, is done.
I, I can address that now. With this size development, um, we have to develop more than just something. So I'll more than likely come back to you guys in six months to a year and ask for permits for multi-band, because I fully anticipate having to deal with housing for a month.
Yeah, I would, I would actually address that, at least ask you for, to consider the following. The reason that the tax abatements are set up by Texas code the way they are, um, is to help with the initial startup costs, not with the follow-on costs. So they phase out over time. So assuming that we keep our commitments to you, and I know that's a stretch since we just met, uh, but assuming we keep our commitment to you, they would phase out over time to where we would pay ten to, our estimate, ten to fifteen million dollars a year in Dimmitt County in term of taxes. Um, but we wouldn't pay taxes in the first couple of years while we were building out because there's essentially no revenue at that point because you're under construction. And that's what the, the tax abatements are for. Uh, but we can negotiate that with your staff, but that's essentially what I'd ask you to consider.
So you all would be heading the project?
Yes, sir, it's my intention.
No middleman in the middle?
Yes, sir, we're vertically integrated, so we get the money, develop, and operate.
And, and operate, so there's no, there's nobody above us to call. If you want to, if you want to answer your questions, we're here to answer them, yes, sir.
I know some subcontract, so that's a concern.
Now, there, a true statement is that we would not be doing all the work ourselves. Now, a true statement is that we would not be doing all the work ourselves.
No, no, I understand, but I'm paying for decision-making. It'll be you all.
Yeah, you have one butt to kick, sir. Yeah, you come to us.
And I can understand the subcontracting, but somebody that's going to say we're going to fly.
So just so you know, I'm the builder who's the operator. So if there's nothing running, we never see anything happen. I'll go to the next one. But I'll be here for the first two and a half years building this thing.
And I intend to be here as long as it's operating. If you have any other information, contact me. My name is Sir, yes. Most easily accessible, if you turn towards the back, you'll see where it goes from pictures to actual text. And in the second page of that text, at the very bottom. May I come up and show you? Oh, okay, you can count.
I'm pretty sure dividing the ranch, you would have clear safety.
Yes, ma'am. You don't want, I think, Russian hogs accosting employees.
Yes.
That would be bad.
Or like even if you had to still hunt on the ranch.
Yeah, well, that was my fault when they brought it to me. When they first said, hey, we want to still hunt on the ranch. And I was like, you're not going to shoot my workers while we're building.
And not just shoot workers, but we intend to bring in a significant amount of natural gas. And shooting at the natural gas pipelines would be on our list of things to avoid. Yes, ma'am.
And are you going to also consider lodging? Lodging?
On-site?
For the ranch side of it.
There's already a ranch house there that-
So you're just going to continue to operate it as?
Yes, ma'am. That's the intention.
Yeah, it's 5,200 acres. We just need 1,200. We'll be hard out.
Yeah. It's pretty good. Yeah.
How close are you to the chaparral?
I'm sorry?
How far or close are you to the chaparral?
I believe that it abuts the chaparral.
It abuts it, so it's right there?
Yes, sir. It shares a fence line.
To the, to the, what do we, west or south?
I believe to the north and east is chaparral. I believe the ranch exists to the south and west of the chaparral. So to frame it for you, as you come in from 35, it's about 11 miles in.
Right. So if you-
Are they, is that going to count? Wait, we haven't heard that out.
Your staff wasn't aware of that, but they are now. And it's actually, it's in-
The chaparral?
No, no, but the way you look at it, the people that do the chaparral is a Falcon.
I know, but why do you think they're here?
Well, I know, that's why I'm-
Because they're in Dimmitt, it's Dimmitt County.
I understand that, but it's happened before, that people have been in here asking for different things.
We got the same feedback when we first called. They said, hey, it's the other county. We called the other county, and it was a coincidence.
And Commissioner Carmona is correct. We were able to verify that. We've got the plot ID numbers. We've provided those to staff. And we believe it's in District 4, which is a shame Commissioner Ruble-Cobham wasn't there.
Right there, what you're talking about, actually, that's considered a tri-county. We have three counties come together right around the area, Webb, LaSalle, and Dimmitt. The ranch across the street, what you're talking about, is actually part of the 0.0 Ranch in this, at least it's called tri-county.
Yeah, I believe you're right, sir. In fact, I believe that was all historically one large ranch, and it's been subdivided over the years.
I'm very familiar with that. 2,000, the add of 67,000, it's 10,000.
Went up for sale or fire?
Fire. It burned, it burned.
From solar panels?
No, no. I'm just saying, I'm familiar with that.
He's just familiar with the area because-
It burned.
Gotcha, okay.
They did a, they have a chance here, they, a fox caught on fire and it took off.
So it was the fox's fault?
I'm sure looking for it.
Well, if it makes you feel any better, none of my solar systems have ever caught on fire in years.
Then there was the fox wrecking.
I think the other thing it speaks to is how well an operator is doing their truck control and making sure they're cutting back on overgrowth and so on. Because you just simply, Charles said it earlier, we can't afford to be in a situation where we have 200 megawatts of solar panels blow up in flames, both from the replacement cost, but also from the business interruption cost.
Well, Mr. Flake and Mr. Komen, I can tell you with some reasonable certainty that I do not anticipate us having an answer for you in regards to drafting up a MOU or a contract within the next 30 days. I am going to contact our attorney, who we specifically contract with for the solar panels, because we have different attorneys that do different things for our county. And so we work with a certain attorney that does these, and we currently have one pending right now. And so what I'll have to do is after this meeting, I'll have to sit with my auditor so that my auditor and I can contact that particular attorney that helps us specifically and is knowledgeable and acquainted with these particular MOUs and see if we can meet with him, because he's from Austin. So that might take some time to facilitate a date for him to come this way. Nonetheless, I want to assure you that we will get on that by the end of this week, the auditor and I. Once we get that, we'll get your contact, well, we have your contact information and start that negotiation process. It can very well be had, perhaps by, within a month. I just can't guarantee you, I'm not going to sit here today and be disingenuous and tell you that it's going to happen within the month. I think practically speaking, it might be a little bit over a month. It just depends, I guess, on all the little nuances and, you know, all the legalities and all the small print that we have to come up with. But as soon as we get that, I'll have my office contact you. And once we do that, have it come before the court again to see if the court at that time, at the minimum, is willing to approve the MOU for a resolution. I just don't want to give you false hopes or be disingenuous with you.
That works. This is a temperature check as well. We don't expect you guys to make a decision quick, but also, we don't want to come in and bite you. You know, if you want us here, we want to come here.
We have fighters on this court, so we won't fight back.
I like hunting, but I don't like hunting enough on just a hunting ranch. So as long as we're still in our due diligence period, you guys make the decision whether you want us here or not, as far as for us.
I did have one more question before. We, I know this is just informational-
Before you answer, Commissioner, can I respond to the judge a quick?
Yes, sir.
I apologize.
No, I'm fine.
Judge, the only thing I would ask is two other things, is don't limit it to just solar, because we're also doing power generation and data center.
I understand that. It's just that this particular attorney that we work with is the one that does anything that has to do with solar. So it's all encompassing to what you're asking, of course, but we're going to show him everything that you guys have generated here for us.
Yes.
But what I'm saying is, for our purposes, we particularly contract with him when it comes to anything having to do with solar. And since this has some solar in it, we would-
And the other thing that we'd like to do, I understand your name is Selena. I have not met her. Somebody told me about her. We'd like to interface with Selena, your grants administrator, on sort of what makes sense in the context of what you've already done and what might be additive.
In regards to the fiber you're talking about?
In regard to fiber, education grants, there's about half a dozen different grants that we've identified, which would bring money to the county for the development of the data center. And we would want to work collaboratively with her or her staff as appropriate to make sure that we aren't stepping on any local toes, but also to make sure that the county is getting the maximum benefit from that effort at both the federal level and the state level.
Other questions, Commissioner?
Yes, one more thing. I'm seeing here too that it's 200 megawatts AI data load powered by 2.6 megawatts. The question that I had earlier was that the facility in Bigwells was at about 100 and everything else was lower. So with watts that high, is there anything to concern?
Yeah, I mean, there is a lot of, it's actually 500 megawatts. So with our business setup, we have to basically have backup power. Whatever we sell, we have to be able to hold in reserve and produce in case one of the generators goes down or a freak hailstorm comes and takes out my PV, my solar. So, yeah, I mean, you've got three CHP gas generation plants or turbines. I mean, that's a fire hazard. You've got solar that's a fire hazard. I mean, anytime you do big developments like this, there's always going to be hazards. It's just, your question to us, are we responsible enough to mitigate those hazards? And we might as well use the oil.
And I would add, ma'am, to be real clear, 200 megawatts of solar, 300 and some change megawatts of CHP, that's 500 megawatts. A good question would be, why are you building 500 megawatts if you're only using 200 megawatts for IT load? And the answer is, what Charles said, is you need to have enough backup power such that if something goes down, you can bring additional power production online so that your computers never, ever, ever go down.
So that's where you're talking about, that you can assist if power goes down because you have that in reserve and you would be able to be good and assist.
That's exactly right. Yes, exactly right. So what you're left with then is, on a day when the sun's shining and you only have 200 megawatts of IT load, you have 300 megawatts of standby capacity so that if Dimmitt County has a blackout, has, if they have a power sag or something like that, you can sell that into the grid and both make money and tax revenue, but at the same time, you can stabilize the grid.
And that was our thought with the island data centers. We don't want to be a burden. We don't want to be a burden on the grid, on the electrical system, on your constituents or people in Texas. You know, that's why we developed the island center, will produce what we use and produce extra of the chaparrals.
So the regular revenue is 5,000?
Yeah, it's just slightly bigger than 5,200 acres.
Okay, and then you're, but you're planning to use around 12?
Between 1,200 and 1,400, yes.
Yeah, because the remainder, 3,900, would be for hunting or the fox.
Yeah, just stay as it is.
What's so appeasing about Dimmitt County for this development?
Oh, a lot of things. So there's very select properties, like it's pretty stringent site selection. So number one is the amount of land for all these solar panels. They take up a lot of space. Two is availability of water. For us, the speed to market, Texas has less regulatory practices for our business getting into the construction phase than, say, Georgia or Virginia. And, I mean, there's just not a whole lot of affordable 5,000 acre plots of land, you know? And a lot of times what we're doing now, like, a lot of people come in, they'll get your permission from the department, and they'll turn and sell the property. That's most people's business. So that's not our business. We prefer not paying $100 million for a property, so we'll just do it ourselves. So your answer is what we can afford.
Well, what we can afford is a really good part of that answer, but I would add to it. I would say that this particular property has fiber right-of-ways that run up and down I-35, which give ready access to Laredo and San Antonio. So while the fiber hasn't been built, we anticipate building the fiber between those two cities to be relatively easy. It's at a great latitude, so solar insulence, the amount of solar radiation that falls on the property, is very high. We are currently looking at, in full disclosure, another property in Idaho. The latitude in Idaho is not as good as it is in Texas, so you don't get as much solar radiation per acre, which means you have to put down more panels, which means it costs a little bit more. So whether you look at the proximity to the Eagle Ford Shale and the availability of cheap gas or cheap sunlight or cheap fiber, there's a lot of things that make building in Dimmitt County attractive.
What speed of internet would we be coming in for your facility? You know, you talk about running fiber that you would want to join in with it. What level of speed is it that you're proposing to bring in?
The fastest we can get.
Well, multiple strands of the fastest we can get. So it would be measured in petabytes per second. Yes.
Mr. Cusinio?
Yes.
What's the highest speed of internet available?
Right now, in this area, 1 gig.
Huh?
1 gig.
1 gig, right now?
In some areas.
Just like another, like another measurement, like kilowatts, right?
Yeah, kilo, mega, giga, exa, peta. So each one is add three more zeros.
Such as it do?
So it's, based on what he said, it's about 100,000 times faster than anything you currently have available. And the reason why is because we'd be bringing in direct fiber connects from NAP, Laredo and NAP, San Antonio. But NAP is Network Access Point.
Harvey, Mr. President, can you repeat yourself about the speed of internet speeds for the judge? She didn't hear you about what we currently have in the area?
Yes, some areas have 1 gig of internet connections.
I think a relevant question is, what are the schools and municipal buildings currently have?
They actually, the school has fiber. I think they're one of the only entities in the area that does have fiber in the ground right now. I think the city of Pariso is just working on installing fiber as we speak. I know that there's a project that they just been bringing up, but I don't think, other than anybody, like a sole individual that has like a company, some similar to your case, I don't think there is any other fiber ran in Dimmitt County other than like the person who's, if it wasn't like one certain area. But like I just said, I know that the city of Pariso has just begun installing fiber in, within the city limits, and I think that's about it. And the school district has fiber for connection.
So our commitment to the county would be, we won't run just a piece of fiber from Laredo and from San Antonio. We'll bring in conduit all the way down, in a bundle of conduit, about 10 conduits in a bundle. We will use one of those, the others will be available for resale, but we will bring in a direct fiber that the city, that the county can own and control for its own needs.
We have fiber. I mean, we have fiber, it's just the problem that we have, because we're a rural community, we have a branch from the original line, and that's why we're so much slower than Laredo, San Antonio, because they have the main line, but we have a branch that we have there, fiber coming down these streets. We, the gentleman back there worked for decades for years, he even was permit on fiber out there coming in and out. We hate going back to that.
And that's why we bring in 2 megawatts, just to be clear.
Fiber here, it's just the slowest process because it's basically a branch from the original pump.
Yeah, it can be what we call an oversubscriptions problem.
I'm sorry, I think you are correct. Who doesn't have fiber at all in the ground is Bigwells.
Yes.
Bigwells has no fiber in the ground. Is that corrected?
How far is it from Bigwells to the ranch that we're talking about? You guys know the topology?
From Bigwells to the ranch, the block, depending what direction it went, roughly about, from Bigwells to that?
45 minutes?
About, I would say roughly about 35 miles.
So 35 miles.
Tilt or tape?
Yeah, so we can-
I was going to say 40.
That is not a big ask in the sort of concept of what we're talking about to sort of help with that.
Okay. Again, I thank you for letting this be an introduction and not making me pressure to make these decisions. We do appreciate it, and hopefully we can contribute the conversation. I know that the judge's office and her staff are very trained in this, in communicating with the communication. And I know that she said that we have a certain attorney that deals with their solar panel, but I'm pretty sure the judge would do her due diligence to make sure that she's covering all grounds as far as conversating for the other areas that are going up in the ranch as well.
And so prior to this meeting, I reached out to each of you via email, sent you some preliminary information and so on. Moving forward, is it possible to have a single point of contact? That would be the contact for the county. Is that you, Judge, or is it Commissioner Ruble-Cobham?
Ruble.
You, yes, ma'am, okay. And is Selena your staff?
Yes, she is.
This is great, thank you.
The only thing that I think that would be beneficial to keep Commissioner from got, and the loop would be that it is in her precinct and in her area, so it's her area coverage. So it'd be good to keep her in the loop as far as any construction, which should be discussed.
100%, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so then, anything else, Joe?
Thank you all. We appreciate your time today.
Thank you for your time.
It's been outrageous since the two satellites have been opened. The destruction from 106 has moved on further towards the South Federal Ranch, but any help situation? The destruction from 106 has moved on further towards the South Federal Ranch, but any help situation? However, that's basically what we're looking for, and I think that road will continue to shred. Right-of-ways, we've cut and shredded the roadway that goes to the, it's Merce Road. And then the co-deficer, myself, when I met with the plant manager, said they're having an issue with debris along the roadway from the drive. But we'll be working on it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions of Commissioner Odena? If there are no questions, we will move on to precinct two report. Commissioner Alonso Caruana?
Judge, there's a correction on the, well, we changed it before for, what was it? July, and the correction that was done was that we worked on County Road 1542 on the west side, because we threw 20 loads of rat materials from, on those tandem trucks on the west side of it. So it got done and it's complete. And then for this month, for August, we did, we continued with 1542. We threw 42 tandem loads of rat material. And then on 1980, we threw 36, there was 36 loads of tandem rat material on that county road. So we're pretty well on those two roads. We're pretty close on finishing them out. And that, we're going to continue till we get done, and then we'll start on County Road once again.
Any questions of Commissioner Caruana? If there are no questions, we'll move on to precincts three and six. Commissioner Talamates?
Judge, we have paused on Mainway Road right now. We have successfully done half of the road with limestone base and retained materials, so we've been able to cut down cost on construction that road. We did go out to Chrisan Road to provide quick catch-ups, and then we also went out to Stakehouse, not Stakehouse Road, I'm sorry. Sunny Acres, Sunny Acres as well. We were dealing with really bad offloads in that area. And then I have one more road, and I'm, you're gonna have to forgive me because I forgot to leave, but I think you're gonna go next now. It was the road that's over there going towards... Katunga? Did I share in addressing with another commissioner in that area?
Henderson?
Henderson Road. Henderson Road also had a really bad... I don't even know what you would call it. Basically, the water is cutting the road.
It's corroding and washing it out.
Yeah, and so there was a huge pothole there. And you can definitely see we're either going to add a covert there or something, because it's just continuing to cut it, cut it. We did place rock material in there to try to stabilize it a little bit more, so hopefully that if it continues to happen, the rocks will add a little bit more stability. Those are the three roads that we're really working hard on. We also brought all the grass under control in a lot of the areas. We were able to break back some of the brush on Stakehouse Road, not Stakehouse Road, I'm sorry, Sunny Acres Road and Barker Road. Other than that, we're just continuing to try to keep up and catch up as much as possible.
Thank you. I am going to table Commissioner Precinct four, five, and seven, Commissioner Lucano. Are there any questions of any of the other reports? If there are no other questions of the other reports, I will entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Caruana. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Talamates. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.24 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for the First Baptist Church to Utilize Section 3 for Friendly Feud for First Responders on October the 12th. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, and appreciate you all. Ken, he'd like to give you his card. You're gonna need to know who he is.
Thank you, sir.
This is an idea that came to me from my friend Jimmy Sewell, who has a ministry outreach for supporting first responders.
If you don't mind, if you can just state your name for the records.
I'm sorry, Jonathan Hewitt.
And your name for the records?
Jimmy Sewell, S-E-W-E-L-L.
Thank you.
He does a ministry that supports first responders. His, one of his main focuses on when first responders are killed on duty, he goes and follows up with the family, supports their kids, that sort of thing. He's always raising money for that. But one of the things he likes to do is to give first responders a chance to get in front of the community and have fun. You can kind of have a low-pressure night. And so the idea is to get a team of like the sheriff's department, a team from the fire department, and they play the game Family Feud. And the winning team gets to win the pot. They get to have a donation to their department, you know, in support. And it's kind of a fun dynamic for the community. It's kind of good for the first responders to get there and be in front of the people and not be in their uniform, not be mean, you know? Kind of gives people a chance to see, hey, they're real people too, you know? And so we need the venue to be, Commissioner Reddick has already helped us with that, getting the date cleared and everything. And I just want to let you know what it is and let you ask Jimmy what all he does and how it's available, how it's going to be handled and stuff. We don't have a ticket price on our handout, so we're figuring out how much we're gonna spend. You know, do we need to spend a lot to get the arena and the conference center? How much we're gonna spend on the food? We're eagerly negotiating that because the date's coming up really quick. So I'd like to let Jimmy be the one you question. I'm just kind of his county contact really right now.
Thank you, Mr. Sewell.
You all have a flyer. You should have a flyer there in front of you that is a temporary flyer, because we don't have all the information until after today.
The funds that you're gonna be raising from this event, are they gonna impact our local, or is it...
Yeah, it's focused on our local first responders.
But the, he was saying, with the Family Feud, that says, for example, it's the sheriff versus the fire department. The winner of it will get some part of that pot donated back to that department.
That's correct. Fifty percent of what we raise when we do the feud goes to the departments that are participating in the program here locally. We don't want to be involved. We're a 501(c)(3). We don't want to be involved. We don't want to ask them any questions of what they need money for. They're all big boys and girls. We figure they can handle their own stuff. The other 50% goes into a general fund for the 501(c)(3). So on our 501(c)(3), we raise money for the families of those who have served as sacrificed. And so this is for people who, if a fireman was killed in a lot of duty, we would provide money for them. What we've seen is, in 243 counties in the state of Texas, 50% of the 100 clubs have gone out of business or went bankrupt because of the COVID crisis. And so this gives us the ability, as a first responder, I kind of, an old first responder, I still think I am, right? I'm just old now. But this is about the families, you know? My family, when I was active, they would tell you that they support what I do, but had I not come home one night, their support wouldn't have been the same as mine when I went into that field. And so I, this is what I do.
Thank you, Mr. Sewell. Any questions?
I think we would like to ask if it's possible
Oh, yeah.
for the court to consider not charging us for the use of that space for that. It's gonna be maybe about a three-hour window, get there and set it up, do the event, and clean it up, you know? If we could have a break on that, that'd be great. I don't know if that's possible, but we wanna ask.
I don't think that I'm having, Judge, I was gonna say, I don't think I have issues with like not charging them. That's not the issue that I'm... The issue that I'm having is, can the firefighters and cops take in the money this technically?
Well, it's turning to the county.
It's not turned in to us specifically. The money goes to him, and then he turns around and makes a donation.
That is correct.
It's like, yes, it's like any donation.
But it will be, it will be here.
Okay, so then as long as we bring it to court, then...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Yeah, we're just basically asking for the holy water blessing to...
For legality purposes?
I'm talking to you!
I didn't hear your question. Of course, I did not hear your question.
Jesus Christ!
So and then it's not, the money, the fund will not go to like head of the department?
No, they bring them to the court.
No, it's like any, it's like any donation that we give, Commissioner, they'll be given, for instance, it'll be a receipt for the sheriff will receive it. Commissioner Caruana will receive it, but then it'll come through Commissioner's Court just for the formality of it, for the approval of accepting the donation.
So can they use the facility with no charge being, that it's a first responder?
I don't know. I don't think so.
Okay, for the...
It's county, it's county.
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna motion Jonathan to make a fee of $10, and I'll pay for that. Please. There you go. I have a second.
So I'm so lost as to what just happened.
You could use the building.
Basically, you're gonna be, it's suffice to say you're gonna, after we go here, you'll be allowed to use the building.
Okay. So may I be bold enough to ask for one more ask?
Yeah. This isn't good.
You may be bold. I don't know.
So when we did this for the constables' offices in Comal County, the county commissioners and the county judge bought a bunch of pulled pork and made pulled pork and coleslaw and stuff like that, and then they served it. One of my...
Kind of there. They're kind of there being in the public, yeah.
One of my, one of my things is, I, as an old cop, people always thought we were not normal, right? And my wife would, my wife would tell you I'm not normal. But I think it's important for our community leadership and the community to see each other in a, as normal folks. And so I just wanted to hit you with that. If you want to do that, fine. Let us know soon. If not, then...
Commissioner?
We're working on the meal.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Talamates to approve a rental charge of $10 for the friendly feud first responders. Is there a second?
Second. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena?
And I will say that as far as the feud goes, I will get together with the other commissioners and see what we can do. Maybe we can just get a donation of briskets, and I'm pretty sure we can put Alex and Commissioner Odena to man that pit and see what we can get done to provide.
Yeah, we're hoping somewhere between
I would much rather have
fifty to 100 to, you know, or so people there, but thank you for your time.
Any moves in the poll in favor? Any opposition? Thank you very much, you, Judge.
And real quick too, before you go, I do really want to thank you as well for coming and bringing this. I feel like this is something that's gonna benefit our community very much, and I thank you for insinuating it and bringing it to us. I really do think it's gonna be a positive out for all of us, because it is very hard. I know that we're not law enforcement, but in our job, it's very hard to make decisions and for people to remember that we are human too. So I hope that this event is one of many for y'all guys in the area, and I thank you so much for...
We would love to see it become an annual.
Yeah. Maybe it can be a tradition. Comes around every year. The different departments get used to it, you know?
And this is a family feud, so?
Say again, ma'am?
It's gonna be an actual family feud?
Oh, yeah. We can't, we can't, we can't say that, ma'am, because that's a registered trademark name, so it's a friendly.
Friendly.
But yeah, it's gonna look like it. It's gonna have the buzzers. It's gonna, the sheriff is gonna be a great player. No pressure, sir.
Let me just tell the sheriff and the fire department that I spent a lot of years at home with babies, and I watched a lot of the show, and I'm really good at it, so. So what she's saying is that you need a phone to friend.
Thank you so much.
Phone to friend, I got you. So what she's saying is we need a phone to friend. You can call her for the answer. Okay, Sheriff?
Phone to friend is a different game. Who said that?
We're making up rules as we go. On number 3.25, item is no action. 3.26 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to Utilize the Fairway Consultant for Golf Course Improvements.
Judge, this particular item might place on the agenda. There's a gentleman that...
Do you have backup for that one or no?
It's just, there's really no, I mean, it's a real simple format. His charge is $1,400 a month, and he stays out there and makes sure that the work that's being supposed to be done is being done for the greens, the fairways, and the landscaping around the...
So what happened to Mr. David?
Mr. David's been gone for four years. David Smith?
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't paid, we haven't been involved with that contract. This is not really a contract. He's only gonna be here until this work takes place. But it's not a contract that we're entering in for a year or anything like that. It's not, it's kind of like this spring, spring, and they come in and spray.
But...
We have a contract.
We don't have a contract.
We have a contract with spring, don't we?
No, we do. I sign it every year, the contract, and then he comes once a month.
We have to have a contract with him too?
It's contractual work, correct?
This is basically for the, this is a consulting.
A consultant.
But it's contractual.
It's not, he's not providing services.
But we're paying.
Well, right, that's why you need to prove it.
It's like a vendor, then?
Yes, like a vendor, yeah.
But then we have to get the vendors approved.
Well, that's why he's on here, so we can approve him as a vendor.
Right.
So we're not approving like the rate right now? We're just approving to, as a vendor?
As a vendor.
But not the rate yet?
Well, that's the rate.
Well, I don't have the rates.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Then if you approve him as a vendor, it's up to your discretion as long as you have the funds in your, in here. I'm sorry.
But the question is, since, do we have to do a contract here?
He's under contract to do the work. I mean...
So it's a contract.
But who put the contract?
He's not under contract. He's not a contractor. He's trying to get away from the contract.
He's gonna be charging the county on an hourly or whatever amount of service he does.
If we put him on the contract.
If we put him under contract.
If it's on a as-needed basis, if we don't need him next month, we don't have to pay.
Right, just like any attorney charges you only for the work you do.
But how many hours is it gonna be done? Are you gonna get down?
But that's what he's getting.
Because if he goes one day only, the other month, that's $1,400.
No, he's not gonna, he's not gonna charge you.
No, 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 but you're not understanding what I'm saying. We're giving him $1,400 a month.
Well, you're not going to...
To consult, like how many times?
Because he has to show. He's up there pretty much.
Commissioner Odena, the only reason why I'm asking you is because, and I can have, my staff is here that deals with, this is the auditor's office, not him in particular, but his staff is always calling my office when we have any contractor vendors that come like that monthly, and they want the contract. And then I'm like, I don't have a contract.
Well, no, I'm just...
I know, but I'm just saying what his staff does to my office.
So let me clarify, just a second.
You know what I mean?
But the attorneys do not have a contract. They basically charge.
Well, he's saying, but your staff...
So I just have Commissioner's Court approval.
Well, they're saying your staff will call my office and ask...
But when it's a contract, a contract where we're going to...
Like the AC service. It's under contract.
I understand, but he just told Commissioner Caruana that it's a contract.
Who said that?
He did.
Well, he's, we're, just like we do with the attorneys. You get it put here in Commissioner's Court, and then he charges whatever amount they do on a...
The only thing written on it, where it's written on, is what he's gonna charge, which is $1,400 a month for his services.
As long as he need, when he needs them. If he doesn't need them, you're not gonna use them.
He's not gonna charge.
I would like to have it in black and white for the simple fact that let's just say, he says he charged $1,400 a month, but then the following month, hey, I'm gonna raise my...
You would have to, you couldn't. You can't. You'd have to come back to Commissioner's Court.
But again, that's what I'm talking about.
But that's why you approve that.
If you have it written down, it would make more sense than having to bring it back to Commissioner's Court and yes or no.
Commissioner, but would you approve at Commissioner's Court? That's it? Even if I wanted to, you can't?
You can approve $1,400 a month?
And the gentleman's...
Max. Max.
He's asking who the gentleman is, because he doesn't have the information.
Um, it's not on the paper?
No, they're like, no, that's just so we don't have no backup. We don't have no backup.
It was submitted into Melissa, and so Ray...
Miss, and Ryan is just saying there was no backup submitted.
It is, well, I don't, can we mention these?
Yes, you have to do a contract.
Can we lock it and we'll get it, because it has it, can we just table it and call it back and bring it to us if she has it? That's it. That's all we have to do. We can motion for table it. We can upstairs ask them to...
His name's Ray Gonzalez. He's retired. He used to take care of all the greens on the baseball field for the school district. He's got all kinds of... He's got all kinds of experience, his license. If we, I mean, we, this county has had a contract before for a greenskeeper and there was...
Is he licensed and bonded? Is he licensed and bonded?
No, of course he's not gonna be on equipment. He doesn't have to be licensed. All he has to do is point and say, we need to spray this stuff and that's it. We need to cut the greens and that's it. He's not on equipment.
And how often is it that you want it like, all year or just until the project is done?
Just until the upgrades get done on the golf course.
And starting when?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. Just for how long, Commissioner?
Approximately six months.
And it's just to get you up, because are you gonna start that project with the...
That's the one he's brought with the sod and the planting and spraying and all that stuff that needs to be done, I think.
Okay, and starting when?
Starting as soon as we can approve this.
October one.
Judge, do they have to be bonded to it?
Not every day, Commissioner? Or just, that's a monthly rate that he's gonna charge?
Not every day.
Commissioner, my uncle was asking if they need to be bonded.
What, how much is it a month that you're, that he's in for, Commissioner?
It's not, it's constant budget.
He's not, he's not, he's not on equipment and...
No, no, I understand that, but let's just say he's, that he directs the employees there. He does this and then, and then there's an error made on that. Where's he gonna leave us?
That's up to you all. That is...
That's why I'm concerned about it because if he tells somebody to cut here and then they, hold on. You mentioned that he was just gonna tell, that, cut here.
Is that a tell me?
Well, see, and if somebody goes wrong, now it's, now it's not him. He's consulting to the commissioner instead of the employee.
You'll actually be able to sue him.
Right.
Well, not really. If the decision comes from Commissioner Odena, it would be his...
We're not trying to make it...
It complicated, we already made it complicated. Fourteen hundred dollars for thirty days of service for somebody who has expertise to come out and better our golf course. If I put this up for a real contract, it's going to be extremely expensive. This guy is willing to do it for fourteen hundred dollars because he's local. He lives here. And I'm just asking because he asked me to set him up as a vendor and I'm trying to follow process, but every time I put something on here, it's, I mean, we go around in fifty circles to get to the same point.
Commissioner, is that...
I understand. Don't vote if you don't want to, that's it.
Commissioner, you look it up.
No, I'm, sir, but it's a pattern already, sir. Every time. If you want to go around circles, let me put it on the agenda. I promise you. That is not fourteen hundred dollars a month. I can tell you, y'all spend more on stuff than we probably don't even use. But if y'all don't want to go for it, just go for it. Eliminate, we've already been here. Today it's gonna be three of us.
Commissioner, ma'am?
That's exactly how I felt about my staff every time I put it in.
I mean, come on, guys, it's...
Come on, guys, you can keep going. Let's go, let's go. We got this. Commissioner, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Forty-six dollars a day is what fourteen hundred dollars divided by thirty days. Is he gonna be out there every single day for thirty days?
He said as needed.
As needed?
As needed. If the golf course...
Okay, so I do not, I do not have anything against you getting another person, but I will tell you that it feels like if we're adding an employee without actually adding a...
He's not an employee, Commissioner.
Hold on, I know. Give me a second.
You, how can you compare that? If I don't need him next week, he's not gonna be here. He's not fired. He's just not gonna be here. And guess what? We don't have to pay him. He's not an employee. Now we're comparing two very different situations. He's not an employee, no benefits, no fringe benefits, no, no rate, no raise, no nothing. He's a, he's, he's an, he's somebody, he's a consultant. Then can y'all look at the working consultant?
Yes, we do. I'm just saying that it's a long period of time. Had you told me that you were gonna hire this individual until your project was done, your project is gonna take three months. I know, but we only have, we only have the agenda, Commissioner. Please see it from our point of view as well. We have no backup, but, no, I'm not telling you that.
I'll just say, don't you...
But I won't. I don't, I don't have anything against you using a vendor and especially if you're, I was gonna ask you next, how much was the improvement for the golf course? Because that was a justification that I was...
What's the difference between this and you bringing up Comfort Tech last Commissioner's Court and you said, I need the vendor to land, to do my work. It's the same thing.
I know, and I'm even leaning that way. You're just arguing that...
I didn't ask you, are, if you, if you're bringing in an employee or how many times are you gonna use them or how many hours are you gonna use them? That's up to you. We're just approving them as a vendor. What's the difference there? Not me, but if for the golf course, it's to Odena.
No, no, no. Don't take it like that, Commissioner.
I got no source, Commissioner. You give me no options?
No.
Can you give me a minute? Can we get a minute? Hold on, guys.
All I asked was, does he need to bond, bond it and contract, contractual? Because I'm concerned that if something goes wrong on that golf course and then something, something happens, then who's, who they gonna sue? Is it the county or they're gonna sue him?
He's not an equipment commissioner.
I'm not talking about equipment. You're just saying that he's, that's where they give orders and the orders are gonna go to you.
Even if you're bonded, you can still sue.
Well, that's what I'm saying, sir.
Even if you're bonded.
It's not a requirement.
And that a requirement to be bonded, insured?
So who means to be bonded, Mr. Pereda? Who means to be bonded?
It's in the statute for certain amounts, contract or contracts or a certain amount or whatever it is.
So who needs to be bonded? Because that's Commissioner Carmona's question. Who needs to be bonded? Because attorneys don't use equipment and we have to have them bonded.
No, they are.
Yes, they are. You require a bond from...
We don't require, we don't require. We require it when the state grant, the state grants do require, state grants do require. And federal grants and what have you. Those are the ones that we do require. But as far as the county, some of these projects, it's up to the county to require.
Commissioner, I do not have anything against, and I know that you brought up, this is the same as the AC. The difference between the AC and this is that the AC is a one-time thing. You're talking about six months. That's the only thing was concerning me. And I wasn't up here and I wasn't asking you a million and one questions. I was listening to everybody and their point of views, but I did not come at you, asking you a million and one question.
Commissioner, we approve them as a vendor. So if next month or next year we want to use them, we can use them. It's not a one-time thing. We was, it was strictly to approve them as a vendor.
Okay. Is it gonna be six months continuous or is it gonna just be as needed for six months?
As needed.
For six months?
As needed.
Do you have the money in your account?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Talamantes and a second by Commissioner Odena.
I would just like for you to make sure that you make sure that there's no licensing or insurance that needs to be done. And if you've been advised, that it be advising you and not the employees to avoid legal issues.
So are you a motioning it to be conditional, conditionally approved?
Yes.
Under what condition?
The condition that he, confirming that he doesn't have to be bonded?
Oh, that'd be...
Licensed and bonded to...
Licensed and bonded.
Confirm that he doesn't have to be something lacking.
So why don't you just motion to table it so Commissioner Odena can get that information to you and then put it back on the agenda?
Why?
When he made my motion, I think he'll, he'll provide the information afterwards. Will you, Commissioner Odena?
She's asking you a question, Commissioner.
I, I, what was?
I said, I think... Bring in the information that he's licensed and bonded.
I'm gonna put it back into Commissioner's Court if it didn't get approved. I'm gonna put it back. Don't worry about it. If y'all want to approve it, it's no, no, no big deal.
Commissioner, it's already approved.
Yeah, okay.
It's already approved right now.
Oh, yes.
You know what? Can I motion for a ten-minute recess or something?
No, I don't need it.
I think we need a recess.
I have a motion by Commissioner Talamantes that it be conditionally approved on the pretext that Commissioner Odena's gonna get the information that he's licensed and bonded.
That he doesn't have to be.
He's not licensed and bonded.
That he doesn't have, that he is not required to be licensed and bonded. Not that he is, that he is not required. Because Mr. Pereda informed us that he does not need those requirements.
Did you get the information that he's not required to be licensed and bonded?
I do not say that.
Did you obtain that for him, Mr. Pereda?
That he's not required.
Thank you. I appreciate your cooperation.
That's a...
I'm telling you, Mr. Pereda.
That was your motion, correct? Your motion is that he submit paperwork that he does not have to be bonded and licensed. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, and?
And what?
And what? I forgot.
I need to know what your motion is, Commissioner.
My motion is that we can, that it be licensed and bond. And what else did I say earlier? What was the other concern that Commissioner Carmona had?
That was it?
No, there was something else. Licensed and bond and that was it?
Then he, if he's saying he's not required to have...
So then we just need paperwork saying that he's not supposed to be licensed, that he's not required to be licensed and bond?
Give me something in writing. I will...
There, there.
Mr. Pereda, you need something in writing that says that he does not have to be licensed and bonded.
For people, yeah, okay.
That what?
No.
Oh, that was the second thing. Give me a minute. That if he's gonna be consulting, that he consults with Commissioner Odena and not the employees, because that was the other concern that Commissioner Carmona had. That if he's gonna be consulting the employees, that if a situation arose, that they would be like a legal situation because it'd be somebody else advising the employees instead of the county. Commissioner Odena said, Commissioner Odena said right now he's gonna be advising me. So I said, I motion to approve.
Advising you?
No, him.
That's been addressed already, Commissioner. Before this even took place?
Yes, just as long as then he's advising Commissioner Odena and not the employees and that he get paper, papers saying that he doesn't need to be licensed and bonded. In other words, he can't direct employees. Do you need me to say it again or word it differently for you? You got it? Thank you.
So you'll need to be there to hold Mr. Gonzalez's head?
No, he, she, he does not. He just needs to give him a phone call and let him know and then Commissioner Odena can call the employees and let him know. Because that doesn't need to be a hostile situation.
Commissioner Talamantes, motion did already. Commissioner Odena seconded. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
We have an opposition by Commissioner Carmona. Motion carries. Three point two seven, discussion appropriate action to discuss on landfill usage for upcoming fiscal year. I am going to table that item.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two eight, discussion appropriate action approval for road and bridge four to purchase a tub grinder from Vermeer.
Do you believe, uh, do you believe that Commissioner wanted it tabled due to the fact that, uh...
Is that what she told you?
Yes.
I'm trying to find that face, ma'am. She called me yesterday afternoon and asked me not to table it.
Okay, then I...
But if y'all want to table it, whatever that consensus is.
Is that because of the situation right now?
I agree with you and she did advise me of that. But whatever the court wants to do.
Motion table.
I have a motion to table by Commissioner Odena.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two nine, discussion appropriate action approval to purchase a playground equipment for parks from Alamo Classroom Solutions.
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Carmona.
We're gonna table this one?
I suppose, is your motion to approve the purchase?
Yes, ma'am.
For the playground equipment?
For the playground equipment. It's a total of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Talamantes?
Where's the, where's the...
Turn your turn, Commissioner.
Byboard?
Uh, it's by board, yes.
You have a byboard, but where's the money coming?
COs, I think.
Um... From my distinct understanding, when I spoke to her yesterday, she told me that it would be coming in from the COs that we just approved for twenty twenty-six.
I don't think that that is correct. She told me yesterday. The tub grater is coming from the COs. This is coming from a venture that she has right now.
She told me that they were both coming from the COs.
They're from her.
From her COs, the CO that we just, that's what she told me yesterday. I might have misheard her, but I'm almost certain that she told me that they're both coming from COs. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point three zero, discussion appropriate action upon completion of elevator restoration, redesignating the Demme County Historical Courtroom as a three sixty-fifth district courtroom.
Need a motion?
I need a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
I'm sorry, give me one second. I'm trying to still find myself on my backups. Right now, we're on, read the...
Three point three zero, to designate the historical courthouse courtroom as a three sixty-fifth district courtroom upon completion of elevator restoration.
I found myself thinking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Four point one, discussion appropriate action request and approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-four white Chevrolet Tahoe PPV four by two Parkway Chevrolet byboard six ninety-eight and equipment to be used for Joe transport using the sheriff's capital equipment budget. Is this sheriff on the current equipment budget?
Well, let's see if we can be able to get to the current one. I don't have anything for the next budget.
No, I know, but in the current one, you have?
Yes, ma'am, uh-huh.
This amount?
Yes. And this, oh, actually not to replace the van, but right now we have our van, transport van in Missouri and next week we gotta go to Alabama. Just trying to get something.
I'm just a quick question, Sheriff. So this Chevrolet Tahoe is a Tahoe or it's a van?
No, this is gonna be a Tahoe to be used for these out-of-state trips. Like this is just one, instead of using the whole van. And the only thing I'll put in equipment is gonna be the cage. It should be the front, the back, and the side window partitions for transports.
So you're going from a van to a Tahoe?
Yes, for, I mean, for these out-of-states. I mean, like right now, I've been using that new van for out-of-states. I got over a hundred thousand miles. The transmission almost went out the other day. I'm just trying to get something that's more, for the gas-wise also.
I was gonna say, might it be more economical if you're circling down, especially if you're just transporting one to go from a van to a Tahoe? You might be saving a lot for you.
Yes. That van is a toll passenger van and the Tahoe would just be using just one. Or if they go to the doctor or something locally, it'd just be with the Tahoe.
Is it, um, are you gonna set it up for safety, like with the split in the middle?
No, that's why the equipment's gonna be on there. It's forty-nine thousand, but it's fifty-four with the equipment, which is gonna be the partitions, cage partitions.
So do you have a Tahoe already or do you...
No, no, no. If approval, we'll get it from Parkway Chevrolet, so the other side of Houston. Byboard. Motion.
And you have the money in your account right now?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Odena and a second by Commissioner Talamantes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? We have one no vote, which is Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Four point two, discussion appropriate action approval of renewal of cell bright software.
That's what we use to extract the cell phones data.
Questions of the sheriff?
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Odena.
You have a question, Commissioner? I don't have a question. I just, I never know what I'm allowed to vote on, what I'm not. What do you think?
With the cell bright, it doesn't have to do with your mom?
Okay, no question. I don't know what it does.
It doesn't have to do with your mom. Cell bright is a service that they use to download the cell phones whenever they have like a search warrant or when there's a crime that's being committed and part of their investigation. Cell bright allows the sheriff's office or the sheriff's deputies to connect the phone to the system with a cell bright and it downloads the information off a cell phone, so it doesn't have to do with your mom.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Odena and second by Commissioner Talamantes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
I have a statement.
And I have one abstention by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Four point three, discussion appropriate action, job status report.
Can I table it? I'll have the marshal before.
Okay. I have a motion to, our motion to table, this item is our second. Second by Commissioner Odena.
Judge, also, just before I leave, give what and what, just let y'all know that the tanks will be stocked up Wednesday, correct?
Yes, our department has some leftover fish from some other run, so Wednesday they're gonna stock upon and they're still going... So Wednesday, they're gonna stock upon and we're still going to stock it October as well. So Wednesday, y'all...
So they'll be... It'll be stocked twice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So we have plenty of fish.
Y'all have fish and they're working on those reports that I told y'all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montes, and thank you, Sheriff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 5.1, status report from utility department. Any updates, Mr. Hyman? Questions?
I'm ready to answer. And then I had shut the water down in the shorehouse and they had to be out of port and you...
Who's gonna shut off the water?
Cynthia.
Why?
They're... The main line?
Where, when did this leak arise?
It leaked this morning.
When was it notified?
I got a warning on standby already.
She wants to know why she wasn't notified?
I just said I wasn't notified and asked why I wasn't notified. I just...
She wasn't notified.
Well, the only reason we found out is because where they are, one that pumps it. And then they notify the city. So as of now, the water is still active. There's still water right now. Yeah. They have a lot of water need along, along first year. Now, the only thing that's taking place from this morning and now is that the city went in, got a visual of the water, but they're working on another water. So there is...
That's refusing, Commissioner? That's not about who?
But at the point of return of... Ma'am, your guys were there this morning?
I've been in court all day, so I haven't had, yeah...
Your guys were there all morning?
Yeah, but I would say heated and notified me is what I was saying when I was getting that. But I also came into court this morning, so I haven't been in there and I would get on my phone. That's why I don't know. I'm just saying that I wasn't. I can't speak for my employees. I said that I wasn't notified.
They notified him and I notified Sheriff.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, it was not your job to notify me. That's not what I'm saying. I'm not thinking here that you didn't notify me. I'm just saying that I wasn't notified.
Well, the only reason that we were involved is because of the leak is on our side. We would be the one fixing it. You didn't.
I have, I have no problem. This is not even...
Well, they started, Commissioner, because you said that you were not notified, but I didn't know that we had to notify you.
First of all, I said it under my breath as I was sitting here that I wasn't notified because this is the first time that I'm seeing of it. My mind is racing at a thousand miles, but again, my men operate and they take care of what they need to take care of. A lot of the times, it's not calling me to micromanage them to say, "Hey, do this, do that." Now that I know that they know, I'm hoping that they took care of any situation that could have arise. But I'm not sitting here trying to fart with anybody saying, "Oh, why didn't you notify me?" If you notice that that was not my question. I did not ask you, "Why did you not notify me?" All I said was that I was not notified. That was it.
So, so you know that you're in charge of the walking?
I don't know because it gets crossed between me and Uranda all the time. I know that he says that it's just me, but when they were like, "Is the lake his...?"
Well, the leak is...
This isn't even an issue where it is a power struggle to feel that I feel some type of way because my only concern, and if you would allow me to explain, my only concern is there are safety concerns. What did I even do? What can I do to help y'all guys to make sure that it gets taken care of? At one point, when I made the statement, it wasn't to sit here like, "Oh, y'all guys took care of it and I didn't take care of it." We're all working one job and we're all doing one thing for the entire thing. So for you to say like, "Oh, you were..." I just wanted to make sure that we were assisting y'all's department with what you needed as well. But it has nothing to do with you. You don't have to call me directly to tell me, "Hey, Commissioner, this is going on." I understand that you have a job to do and you go about your day to do it. It's not even up for discussion, literally.
I had Mr. Turpian and Jake go out there and see if that mine belonged to us. When they got there, said, "All belongs to the city." So we notified the city so they can go out there and check it out.
Again, I was saying, the only reason that I felt some type of way about it was to make sure that we're assisting y'all guys and working with y'all to make sure that we're getting everything covered. It wasn't a situation where I'm sitting here and saying, "No, you didn't notify me. I understand that you have a job to do and you did everything that you were supposed to do." I'm not up here with my big, so my head's so big that says, "No, you need to call me and notify." That's not what I said, sir.
I have a question, Mr. Hyman. So with that leak, Commissioner, I just mentioned right now, there's gonna be homes that are affected?
No.
What did you say?
Water line runs and it provides water.
I'll go check it. We'll go check it when we're done here.
What did you say?
It provides water for the road arena, Sheriff's Department.
Oh, the road arena, the Sheriff's Department.
And the Sheriff's Department. That's it. That's the trouble line that runs. That's what we're gonna tap into for the sporting...
I don't know why I'm thinking... I'm so sorry. I'm thinking you're talking about the sports conference. Who said the sports conference?
No, not sports. I just said this on the common part. Did you send water mainly at the Sagado County Park?
I was thinking this...
So the only thing that, Mr. Hyman, did was contact the sheriff because if anybody would be affected, great, it would be sheriff's fault if they shut the water.
Okay.
So we have tankers and possibly cordials if...
Well, can you let me know though in regards to if it affects the arena? Because we do have some of employees there, like if they can't use the restroom and stuff. Like for my, the agri life.
We'll put some...
I do have a question on your report though. Getting back to the report. I see you continue with mowing, blading, picking up trash, brush pickup, Valley Street, repair pothole on Valley Street and then the main water leak. What percentage of your job is actually utilities? What percentage of your job, like of your daily workload, is utilities?
It's utilities every day also because I have, we have the three wells that we have to maintain.
So between an eight-hour day, how many of your hours are dedicated to utility service?
To utilities? Maybe three.
Three hours out of the day?
Huh?
Three hours out of the day?
Yeah, and then the rest is with the precinct.
And then how many employees do you... Does it take for you with the utilities to make sure that everything's checked every day, daily? Three? So three and then yourself?
No, I go check and that's it. And you need to work the brick.
So you have three employees that check up on the utilities for about three hours of the day now?
Well, I have two employees that check on the water, on the water pump. And I have one employee that's doing a maintenance. Spilling the rest.
Around these areas, around these utility areas?
The meters and all that other stuff.
Okay. So then a total of three employees. Technically, you do not cover anything since you supervise them. You supervise the whole department. So three hours out of the day, it takes three employees to get everything done for you to lose?
Three, three, three waters. Mr. Hyman.
So it could be done with one employee?
Don't, don't, don't even enter into that. You're not gonna, you're not gonna get any orders. You work for me, Mr. Hyman. You don't worry about how, what you do with three hours, ten hours, where... You don't worry about that.
Because it starts to make sense.
You work for me. Let that be clear right now. I don't ask her, she does for thirteen employees, so she doesn't have to...
I can tell you.
I don't need to know. I already, I can tell you by just looking at what y'all doing. So I don't need to know.
No, I had no problem. I had no problem. I had no problem.
You don't, you don't have to answer any other stuff. You work for me, Mr. Hyman.
Actually, he submitted a report to Commissioner's Court, so they have to...
That's your report, read it.
Do you need to answer any questions I asked on it? I had a whole bunch of questions on it.
Well, ask the questions on the report.
I did. I did, right? I asked questions based on the report.
You're asking questions on the employees?
Did I ask questions based on the report? Yes. I did not say anything personal out of line. You just didn't like where it went.
No, because you start...
Because you know what it said. Because you know what it said.
Any other questions of Mr. Hyman?
Questions are approved.
I have a motion to... Give me once I have a motion to approve Mr. Hyman's report. By Commissioner Alonso Carmona and a second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.1, discussion on appropriate action regarding the 365th employee mileage pending POs dating back to January 2023. Again, Commissioner, I will just for the record, put on the record that as the Chief Budgeting Officer of this county, it's my position that as part of the duties and obligations and as Judge Vasca and his staff, Ms. Garcia, were here last time, I mentioned that part of their job duties and requirements are to travel to the tri-county member dividend Savala. I don't believe and it's my position that Demet County should pay reimbursement of mileages to non-Demet County employees, which in this case, his employees, his staff are non-Demet County employees. And further, I don't believe that we should be paying any mileage or travel that is required as put as by the judge and his staff members said. That is my position and that is, um, the wholehearted reason as to why the POs have not been approved. Because as the Chief Budgeting Officer, I have to make sure that I do what's in the best interest of the county financially speaking. And I didn't think that we needed to approve those. I am not gonna shift the blame on anybody, but in discussions, and you guys were here as well when you heard the discussion from our HR, that he did not believe as well that these should be paid. I am going to remain in my position. Any questions for the Commissioner's Court? Judge? Yes, ma'am.
Are these the same that we already voted on?
My distinct understanding, Commissioner, and why this is, was put on here was because I think the HR department, what we voted on last time was for the meals, if I'm not mistaken, and did not direct the mileage. So the mileage did not get paid, but the meals did get paid. That's my distinct understanding.
I had let Judge Vasca's office know that this is the same miles, they're on the same POs. But from that meeting, only the meals were mentioned in the minutes. So I had paid the meals through payroll. But for the miles, it wasn't clear on the direction of the court because a majority of the discussion was on the meals that I was involved with. So since there was no reference to the miles on the minutes, the miles haven't got paid. But the miles would be a separate check through accounts payable, not through... When I would sign off the check, but it would cover miles.
Correct, and that's why those weren't paid, Commissioner Talamantes, because the court, based on Mr. Ortiz's research and based on the research from my office, it was just approving his meals, or his staff's meals, not the mileage. And that's why, again, I mentioned to you my position regarding the mileage. Because it's a separate check.
We can't pay because of the retro payment. Weird because the budget's already set.
Correct.
Are you asking it to pay with this year or...
Yeah, for...
I don't understand.
No, they're asking for the mileage to be paid retroactive from 2023. That was submitted. Correct. That just ask it to be paid.
So you paid all the meals and you just didn't pay mileage?
Correct. Correct.
Do we have the funds to cover?
Yes.
Mr. Turpian?
Yes.
This year or next year?
This year.
Do we have a next year?
She's asking, do we have it for next year?
No. Oh, do we have it for next year to get approved?
Do you have the funds for next year?
We have the funds this year to pay this. Next year would be a separate approval that you don't need to... That they need to...
Because my thing is that I don't have a... Last time when we did approve, we had a full list of everything. I don't have a full list of everything. I don't have an exact amount of it or anything.
Yeah, it's, it's the same mileage from those POs.
Yes, same mileage from the POs, you got it. Does anybody have a copy of it today?
I do not have a copy, Commissioner, of it today.
But they need to... Make sure.
I feel like you need to be a little...
I'm sorry. And then we had no backup was submitted. It was just that item that was submitted, Commissioner. And that's how I put it.
I'm in a motion to table because I don't feel comfortable saying yes, just pay any set amount when I don't, I cannot remember how much that set amount was and I don't know how much it is to say yes. I don't think that it was fair that the, that it was delayed on being paid for so long. So I do apologize for that because I know that it's been some time coming. But it was easy for me to justify the meals because we had everything in front of us. We had the paperwork and the receipts and everything in front of us. For mileage, we don't, there's no backup.
May I address you?
Yes.
Judge Vasca, the 365th. I believe all the documentation you gave included the vouchers for the travel. And so you have that map? I can give you the specific amounts for each.
Yes, sir.
There's five of them packed with employees.
Do you know that amount, Commissioner?
For Carolina Lopez, it's one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. For Patricia Salinas, it's three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ten cents. She's my court reporter, and I'll address that in a minute. For Melissa Garcia, it's three hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents. For Laura, um, it's... It's, or Gaels, it's eighty-eight dollars, Mary Namsgaels. And for Elenda Bia, it's two hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents. And I believe the documentation I gave you included...
It was Judge Vasca. The prior documents have both meals and mileage.
And I think it's just that when the court took the action, it only voted on meals and I did not, wasn't aware of that until I found out that they had not been reimbursed. And that was the basis for the treasurer not paying that, but not because it's not an authorized expenditure. I've been a judge for over thirty-five years. My staff has always been reimbursed their meals. When I said, "This is attorney," my staff was reimb... I'm pardoned their mileage. When I said, "It's attorney," my staff was reimbursed their mileage when we came to these other counties. Also, at Savala County is paying it. So it's, it's a legitimate expenditure. And it's always been paid. It's been paid even before I was, I was judge. As I said earlier, even when Demet County belonged to the 49th District, District out of, uh, out of, or district out of Laredo, even they were being paid when they were coming from Laredo to Teresa, Queens. And I think the only reason it wasn't paid was because I think the way the action was taken didn't include specifically the mileage. But I think if you take that action, then it'll solve the problem. If they're not paid that, their, their reimbursement, then basically they're paying out of their pocket the travel to work over here. And the argument that they're not Dimond County employees, again, you, you pay part of their salary. They are employees of Dimond County. We're just as responsible for Dimond County as we are for Maverick County. It's just that they cannot be classified as a triad county employee for insurance purposes and retirement.
Judge, and we do pay, we do, you're absolutely correct. We do pay to government and we pay your staff a hefty amount. And it's just really hard for me as a chief budgeting officer, for me to ethically and morally sit here and say for us to reimburse your staff for mileage for a job that they do already. And we don't do that for our own staff, for our own employees who get paid much more less than what your staff is. And, and that's the only position, Judge. It's not personal. You can think all you want that it's personal. Anybody can think it's personal. I just, in looking at the numbers, it's extremely hard for me to sit here and look at some of our employees of Dimond County and refuse or question in giving them mileage or reimbursement for meals, which has been done here in the past. But we give it to your employees and it's just extremely hard, Judge, for me to look at those numbers. So I'll let the court vote, but I'm going to stay with my position in the fact that when you look at the numbers and you compare apples to apples in the, the job description that your staff does and some of the job descriptions that some of our employees do here. I, I just can't sit here and justify paying mileage to your staff for a job that they're supposed to do. We don't pay mileage to some of our employees for some of the jobs that they do or meals. And it's been evident here in this court that some employees' meals and mileage have been called into question for our own employees. And so that's my position, Judge Abascal, with all due respect to you.
As far as not being able to, that would suggest that every single county judge for the past several decades has been doing something unethical because they.
No one's saying anything about being unethical, Judge. I've done my research and I've contacted several county judges to include Webb County, LaSalle County, Uvalde County, and they don't pay their judges, district judges' staff reimbursements for mileage.
Meanwhile, there's only one judge out of Laredo that travels. He goes to Savala, I mean, Savala, I'm sorry. So most, most district judges in Webb County don't travel.
I understand, but I'm just telling you that I've done my research, Judge, and I'm just advising you of the other counties. There's a LaSalle County judge. Both judges cover five counties in LaSalle County, the district judge is over there. So I'm not, I'm not going to further, I'm not, I don't want to have a discussion or argument with you, Judge. I'm just giving you my position with all due respect. It's just for me on a moral, on a moral level and as a chief budget, it's really hard for me to be able to see our Dimond County employees and question them and ask them for reimbursements and ask them for all kinds of receipts to pay them. And none of them get paid nearly as much as your employees get paid, Judge. And that's the hard part for me. But with all due respect, that's my position. And if any of the other judges, commissioners feel differently, they're more than welcome to. That's the luxury of having five different mindsets on this court is that we can all have the liberty to decide how we want to and we can agree to disagree, Judge.
Well, I would respectfully request that the commission is authorized a legitimate expense that has been approved, as I say, for decades up until January 1st, 2023. And there's only one thing that happened on that.
And you can say that, Judge. You say that every time and you can blame it on me and make me the bad guy and that's perfectly fine. I'm willing to take that heat. I just think that I'm not going to stay complacent, Judge Abascal. I refuse to stay complacent. And I'm sorry that we're, we're saying status quo that is because it's been done like that for 30 years or when you were the DA. I'm sorry, but I'm not going to follow that practice. And that's my position, Judge. And I hope that as, from one attorney to another and from a judge to another judge, that you can respect my position is that I'm not going to meet status quo and I'm not just because it was done for the past 30 years that it needs to continue to be done that way. And that's my position.
Because it's something that I've placed in my budget annually for the last 30 some odd years and has always been approved. And it's, it's just like it's being approved in Savala County.
I, I agree, Judge. I agree. And, and you know what? We can share that same sentiment, which I've advised this commissioners' court before. You know, we have, on my, on my budget, we have a budget where staff and the commissioners' court and the judge can go on travel. We have travel budget, just like you do. But sometimes this court has sat up here and has not approved that, even though I have it in my budget. And you can agree with me that with what you're saying right now, what you're telling this court, that because you have it in your line item, that we must approve it.
I'm saying that. I'm just saying that it's a legitimate expense and it's something that I need to be able to carry off my duties. I need to be able to bring my staff with me and, and so they perform their duties so the court can function. And it's just not fair that they should have to pay out of their pocket because I've asked them to come over here and do something in order to benefit the court and the citizens of this county. That's why we budget for it. And it's not like you're not approving an expend, not approving an expenditure, you know, before the bag, where the employee doesn't go out of town. This is an expenditure that is, that's incurred and then not reimbursed. When it's of necessity, it's not an optional thing. They come to do the work. And as you know very well, Judge, statutory, the, the, the court reporter is entitled to.
Oh, I understand.
And yet we have an approved.
I understand.
So I don't understand the justification.
The court reporter is something.
The court reporter, statutory, is entitled to the reimbursement for any expenses traveling outside of a county residence, even though that isn't approved. So this logic that it's not.
I understand what you're saying, Judge.
It's, it's just an outright refusal to approve a legitimate expense.
I understand it and I have no issue with Patricia. And I've told you that.
Yeah, you have an approved.
That nauseam, I've told you that.
But you have an approved.
You're asking, I'm, I'm talking in specific to your other employees. Melissa, $325, another one for $271, another one for $189. I know, I understand Patricia and I know what you're saying. And the government code specifically says up to $800 for Patricia. I understand that and we, we got it approved last time. Unfortunately, the HR office did not cut that check out because that was not what their understanding was, so they didn't cut the check out. I understand what you're saying about Patricia. I'm not, and that might have been a complete oversight in regards to Patricia. I'm not talking about Patricia at all whatsoever. I'm talking about, I never have I talked about Patricia at all. I'm talking about the other employees, Judge. That's what I'm talking about.
I appreciate that, but although you haven't talked, you're not talking about Patricia, obviously, in three years she has been reimbursed.
I, 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 I will concede to the fact, I will concede to that fact and I will wholeheartedly tell you that it might possibly have been a complete oversight on Patricia. But I'm not talking about Patricia because she's the court reporter and I understand that, but I'm talking about the other employees, Judge Abascal.
Judge, I have a question. On this, on this, that you're asking for, is this from '23 up to now or?
Yes.
It, it's always been paid up until January 1st, 2023.
What's like, this is like.
What I'm asking is, we're on 2025. So this is up to 2025?
This is through today.
Through today.
Well, actually, the amount's, I think, from, from what I submitted the last time, the last week.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm just trying to get it toward.
Right.
Because I only see January 2023.
Well, no, going back, going back to January 23.
Right, but I didn't know if it was up to the present or.
That's the total amount that he gave you, Commissioner?
A thousand, what is it, a thousand something?
A thousand, $251.
That's the total amount for all the employees.
But that's over almost the three-year period.
Motion to approve.
I would say that, I was, I was going to wait to, to say my B.
No, go ahead.
I, I agree that they should be paid because we already motioned on it and that money was already allocated in those budgets. But I will not say that I'm going to sit up here and think that we should continue to be paying those fees. I have looked into it a little bit and I do think that Maverick County needs to be covered a little bit more of those costs. So I just wanted to make it clear. I, I said up here last time and I said if it's in your job description, you knew that it was in your job description when you took the job, you shouldn't be compensated more on top of that for whatever it is. And I know it's, it's a difference of opinion. I, I, I hope, I, I know that. But I was going to say that I do agree to pay them on, on the record that it was already in your budget for already so long. It's $1,251. It's not an amount that is going to break the bank and, or argument say to get back on the right track. But I just wanted to let you know right here that just because I'm approving it this time doesn't mean that I think that we should continue to be paying these fees. Because looking into it, I do feel like there's, we need to adjust it a little bit. But I do agree with the fellow commissioners. Let's go ahead and pay it for the thousand now, clear the situation off and.
And through September 31st.
Yes, and then after we do the budget again, this is, at that time, is we should, we should really have the conversation to see what is it that Dimond County can offer you and what is it that we can get from other sources. Thank you, Commissioner.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? I will oppose.
Judge, well, I can have, Mr. Phil Amos, please, have a motion to favor. So you're rescinding your motion?
Yes, and then he gave you the amount. And then he gave you the amount. Okay, yes, I rescind my motion today. Will you, ma'am? Melissa, Patricia was a 377, right? That was a court reporter that had it.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
6.2, Discussion on Appropriate Action and Monthly Report from the County Treasurer, Mr. Oscar, please, for the month of August 2025.
Good afternoon, Mr. Ortiz.
Good afternoon. This is the cover page in our report that.
All right, that's our data.
Say it again.
Danny, here you go. Make sure you can borrow. I already reviewed it. You're welcome.
Only thing I really wanted to make the court aware of, I'm, I'm getting around to doing those surveys you had wanted about that PTO policy. Just because if you took, if you go to the, I think it's the second or third page on my report, it shows how much overtime, how many non-grant overtime we paid. And we're already above $60,000. So I do believe that PTO policy, I mean, it would be better for the employees and better for the county because it would help eliminate so much overtime getting paid. But I am working on those surveys and I've done about 40, but I need to get with everybody
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Talamontes, second by Commissioner Losocarmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. We have 6.3, Discussion on Appropriate Action and Amending Investment Policy for Composite WAM. A portfolio of being no more than three years. Is that yours, Mr. Ortiz?
Yes, well, I think we both.
You're also going to say you're kind of collectively, right? Collectively putting it on?
Yes, we both have the position to amend our policy so we can invest out a little bit farther to increase our returns, just because the rates are starting to drop.
That's you to approve.
Once a year, it's your, anyway, yes. So it's the only correction, the only amendment for this year is just this one. Pass back.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Talamontes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Losocarmona. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 6.4, Discussion and Monthly Report from County Honorary Sir, Mr. Carlos Perez, for the month of August 2025.
Okay, so if you look at the first page under current taxes, we have, we had projected $12,648,000. We have collected $13,124,152, which we are $476,000 above what our projections. Our sales tax, and this is through August, we have collected $4,082,000. We have projected $3,030,000. So we are $1,051,000, $1,051,000 over projection. We're also $1 million over on interest earned. And in our, there's one more. Our detention board bills, which are the revenues from the jail, we're at $212,000 over revenue. So in total, we have collected $22,790,000. If we look at the expenditures, to the next page for departments, year to do, year-to-date expenditures for the year are $18,795,348, which puts us $3,995,436 revenues over expenditures through August. So projecting forward through September, we should be still within the $3 million revenues over expenditures in the general.
Oh, the first numbers? The $3 million what? Right now?
That says a.
But if the one that you just gave, the second?
Oh, the last one, that's projected, that's going forward.
Yeah.
About a little over $3 million.
Okay.
Give or take, really.
Questions of Mr. Perez?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, my Commissioner, Losocarmona.
Second.
Give me one second, Commissioner, and I apologize. Mr. Perez, so in short, just to summarize, as, as a county, as of right now, we are healthy and financially sound?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And we're approving every year. I mean, we have been, we're approving on balance every year for the last so many years.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Commissioner Losocarmona, second by Commissioner Wudenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. On 6.5, Mr. Perez, Mr. Ortiz, is that essentially a, it's a, it's a duplicate of what Mr.
It was a duplicate, right. But you all approved it, right?
Yes, sir, we did. So there is no action on 6.5?
Correct.
Ms. McDaniel? And then we have 6.6, which is a budget adjustment between the constable's office and that is to, from data processing and training to fuel and oil, telephone and supplies.
Have you reviewed?
Yes, ma'am.
He submitted all of them. If you want to briefly look through them and if you're okay with that. Do you want?
No, not at all.
I already got through them. I have a motion to approve. To approve all of them. It's just moving money around. They're not moving money that's not there, but I did go over them.
So give me one second. I'm going to have.
6.6.
I have a motion right now from, for 6.6 by Commissioner Talamontes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Losocarmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? At this time, I have a motion.
For which one?
There's a, well, there was a request that perhaps from 6.7 through 6.31, that there be a motion and.
No, that's okay.
Is it, is it correct to say that there is a motion to approve items 6.6 through 6.31 in a bulk motion?
Yes.
Under the understanding that everyone's reviewed the documents?
Yes, ma'am.
And that the auditors reviewed.
You're not moving any money that's not there. All the funds is there.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Talamontes, second by Commissioner Losocarmona. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. We have the claim docket, Mr. Perez. On the claim docket, we have on the general fund, $731,936. On Dimond County Airport, we have $41,151.70. Dimond County Golf Course, $71,403.87. Court House Security, $5,518.51. Records Management, County Clear, $1,397.23. Utilities, $72,863.21. Stone Garden, $88,000, excuse me, $149.54. Operation All-Star Program, 2022, $8,106.51. Dimond County Payroll, $577,572.1. Tax Note Series, $5,028.56. Tax Note Series, $24, $273.13. Interest and sinking, $20. COs, $219, $43,916.68. And SB 22, $13,443.90 for a grand total of $1,605,938.41. I have a motion, my Commissioner, Losocarmona. Second, my Commissioner Talamontes. All in favor?
What else? Wait, no, 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 I don't, I don't. There is one on here. There is one for a train that I was looking through.
And. So you're withdrawing your motion?
Yes, I'm, yes, I'm sorry.
She's going to rescind her motion. Two second.
Yes, because there is one that we need to clarify real quick. If you give me a minute.
Okay.
I know that I saw it, but if you want to look right on your NSP, there is one that is for train and on the code it said for service agreement. We have not approved the service agreement yet for train. I believe that the bill amount is correct. The only correction that needs to be there is that. The only correction that needs to be there is that it's not for the service agreement.
That would be for the public facilities?
Mm-hmm.
That's, this is the general.
So where's... Oh, that's the next one, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's right. So, yeah, I'll put it back, sorry. Long thing. They did on the next one, though. On train, on one of the codes, they put the bill, they put the service agreement, we haven't approved the service agreement. It's like, on, uh, right now, on the claim docket for public facility, on one of the train invoices, um, on the last one, train nine nine two for train, eight four twenty-five, public safety, it says service proposal. I don't know, I don't know if that's a service agreement. It's not the same amount, but...
But that's in the public facilities.
But this...
Yeah, that's what you said the next one, she was asking me to repeat it. We're gonna wait to get some public facilities.
Oh, during the morning?
Yes.
Yes.
So... So, yes, I put my motion back to the claim docket for, um, road, uh, not, for, uh, general fund.
For the claim docket, yes. So on the claim... On the claim docket, I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, and I have a second by Commissioner Talamontes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Is there an item that I was supposed to? Oh, it was, the sheriff was telling me about the pay warning, but he already said it. Are we waiting or? Are we waiting for it, or what do we do? I did it or something?
You need to adjourn.
Oh, I thought she said wait, okay. Somebody said wait? Somebody say wait?
No. Did we vote?
No, we haven't voted yet. On the claim docket, we haven't voted yet. But that, that, I thought I heard somebody say wait. No, she didn't, Ms. McDaniel didn't get it. Right? You, she, she has a motion, but we haven't voted yet.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the claim docket?
Aye.
Aye. And I, I suppose that Commissioner Talamontes is saying aye too, 'cause she seconded it. Yeah, she seconded the motion. Okay.
This is a long thing, I think, sir.
Ten minutes? One hour and a half?
It's three thirteen. Okay. I entertain a motion to adjourn and...
Some who second?
Uh, motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, and second by Commissioner Urenda. And Ms. McDaniel, the time is now... What is it? All in favor?
Aye.
Did we not vote, or they're just pulling my name?
You know what, at this point, I don't know anymore.
Excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
It works.
Okay, so now...
I, I wasn't here, go.
No, but you motioned it.
They didn't want to vote, sir. I know we're doing it, just like, I'm agreeing to something, I was in here.
Yes, it's for the motion to, to adjourn, Commissioner. So now we are at the public facilities case.
This is the thing I'm coming out of the first budget.
Thank you. The time is three fifteen, and we are calling the parts and public facilities need to order. Roll call, let the record reflect that all parties are still present. We do have one absence, Commissioner Gugava. We do have a quorum, one point three, approval of minutes of September eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve, submission fraction.
Motion by Commissioner Talamontes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Two point one, discussion, inappropriate action, new business. Any new business, Commissioner Talamontes?
We, um, we're experiencing some more of the ACs going down, different ACs than the ones we're being serviced on. I don't, I know that we didn't go over the budget, um, but there is a budget amendment for about...
It's a budget adjustment.
It's a budget adjustment, yes, sir. We're, honestly, we're struggling with ACs, bottom line. I, I can't remember which it is, it's about another sixteen thousand that we're proposing or we're expecting after those jobs are gonna be complete. We're already like at eighty thousand, ninety thousand for these AC units, um, in the facility. Other than that, um, we've had a few electrical issues, and we have had, had, uh, two meetings. I had one that I sent in with, and then the employees there, and then another, and they are, um, in communications with, uh, Del Rio Sector's assistant. Um, they help and assist with all, like, the needs of the facility. So they are trying to help us out with some of the, the projects that are going on. But two, the biggest concern, three, the main concerns that we're experiencing, uh, the water patrol station that we're anticipating that next year is gonna require funds and attention, is the roof. Um, we have leaks, we have patched them. Um, we don't know if our patches are gonna uphold, so that's something that we need to take into consideration for next year. Um, we have been looking at alternative solutions, um, as far as compound, kind of like Flexio, but like a more flexible flex, Flexio, so that way, um, it's able to penetrate more and it's would be a lasting, a longer lasting, um, repair than what we're using right now at the moment. The ACs, our ACs continue to go down continuously. I think it's at a point where none of the off, the entire facility isn't running at a hundred percent. And so one thing goes down, one thing up, and another one goes down, and so it's just kind of like a whack-a-mole project, basically. Um, we are hopeful to get everything back on track, and then the, the electrical. We're having multiple issues with the electrical, which we're now trying to find a connection to those two problems because there are certain situations that the electrical is shorting out and it's tripping the breaker, and we're thinking that that may be a big issue with the ACs because when something trips, it feeds it full force. And so we're thinking that that may be a problem, so we may have to not cause, so to speak, but really start addressing these electrical issues. The dress, electrical issues, I'm having a hard time doing it because we don't have any as-built or electrical. Um, in the beginning, when I came in, I know that I asked for them, and they were not provided to me. After some time, um, we did call around and see as to who might have them.
What do you, what is that, you're talking about?
As-built.
The planter, the planter?
Yeah, we ended up finding them, and Commissioner, what Commissioner Carmona, and Commissioner Urenda, he did provide them to us, but they're not complete. It's not a complete as-built. So when we are dealing with electricity at the water patrol station, you're literally pulling out one wire to see what other wire is complete because we have no template to go by as to what is what. So I was thinking that that's something that we may need to invest in, is getting these as-bills.
Commissioner, have, have you looked at the, where there's the, the gym? There, there's some, uh, roll-up, uh, what you call, uh, plants?
Gym.
Building plants?
Gym.
And then, uh, cordless?
I have not checked there.
Monday?
I have not checked there.
There's some, no, but there's some, some rolled up on, uh, on, I guess, I, kind of like a desk or something. You wanna go and look there?
I, I will, but look there, we're also looking for, I know we're looking for the as-bills for both rec centers as well. We don't have those either. Um, I'm gonna go take another look, if, if anybody else wants to help us track down those, um, as-bills. We do have, for the water patrol station, a proposal built, that the station has. A proposal built.
Proposal?
But, um, when we address things and we ask for assistance as far as, like, um, companies to come in and assist, they will not take those builds or those proposals into consideration because they're not the as-built. So the as-built is something that they need. So if we cannot find them, we may have to invest in, um, purchasing them again.
Thank you, anything else?
I think, and the last thing, honestly, is the service agreement. I know that we tabled it last time. I don't know where we are with that situation and how we feel about it, um...
But that's only another item.
Oh, yes. That is it for that, right?
How long is the board?
Three point one, just go.
Do you know, uh, roughly?
You have a question? Like, even in the eighties or so?
You have a question? What was the question? What I heard was like...
In two thousand, that's when they did the new...
Two thousand?
Yeah, I was at the same.
We started doing it, and so our contract...
So it's fair to...
No one beholds the building.
But two thousand, they did the...
So it's not that old?
The additions.
The addition, but the first part was back in the eighties, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they redid it, and from the bigger, and...
Yeah.
So the, what's, the plant that...
It was a ten million dollar project.
I'm asking if the plants that are there, are generally saving from Del Rio?
And it has that many problems in twenty years? That's crazy.
You keep, you keep looking for the roof, looking for the plant, 'cause they wanna update or upgrade the gym area in the back. You left it there, you looked for everything, followed what you needed.
Yeah, I know, 'cause he did, he, the, the electrical's not in there, Commissioner, please. I did tell him to come and talk with you, that you had part of them for the gym area. We did give him the minutes, and we did approve for that to happen, but the electrical is not in there. And yes, you're right, it's been about twenty, from what I've, well, from what I've been advised, it's been like a building that's about twenty, twenty-five years old.
One part of it.
Okay, yeah, that's what...
That the first part is cutting to eighty-five, eighty-six.
There's even areas in that facility that we don't cover as a county. Like, if it was an add-on, we don't cover those areas either. Um, but that's just from the, again, doing with what I got with the information that was provided from when I took over. Um, we are having electrical issues that we're thinking that is causing, um, the AC.
Thank you, Commissioner. Three point one, discussion, appropriate action, monthly report, Mr. Perez de?
It's a question returning the rights. Then we need to...
Oh, sorry.
It's a question returning the rights. Yes.
I know, but we don't make other people.
No, they, they really...
No, we, we have different... So, total revenue for the year is one million, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Expenditures for this, for that department is about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So right now, we're one million, ninety-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight revenues over expenditures.
So I did good.
Superb.
Motion?
Motion by Commissioner Urenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two, discussion, appropriate action to approve the yearly service agreement for the public facility, board patrol location.
Judge, I honestly, I guess we can have the conversation about it to see how we all feel about it, but this is the amount that is up, it's proposed a, a sixty-five thousand, uh, yearly fee. And there have a list of all the ACs that are there, um, everything that will be cleaning, the service description, all of that information.
Did you bring us a different one for Cool Comfort, you said?
Cool Comfort is the smaller AC, Judge, that's one for the all-innings part. That one is for like the smaller ACs, like... I don't know, if somebody can help me?
They don't do the commercial.
They don't have a...
They don't have a...
I've asked, I've asked both of them. There isn't anybody else that does it. I know that the amount is pretty big, and honestly, I, I will not be offended if we table this, um, item. Um, I just wanted to bring it to the court to tell you exactly what we are looking at and the systems that are being, um, requested for coverage. If the, everything went as planned as far as our, um, remember when we did the, um, diagnostics, and we did it twice, Judge? We did it right when Juan left, and then we did it when I came in. Had the second diagnosis, and we completed everything, and everything was up and ready, and it would've done what I thought it was gonna do, then I would be more open to saying, hey, let's do this, and let's get this up for the year. But since we're still experiencing so much issue, I don't... I'm willing to take advice from the court on which direction we want to go with.
Is there any way that you can expand your search and see if you can find another business outside of train, like maybe looking in San Antonio? Um, you already, you will pass, like, maybe expanding, expanding your search?
I believe we did one with San Antonio. Is, is there a registered data? Remember how bad we were having problems, that we were discussing the ACs? And train was expensive? And then we opened a business, uh, uh, account? Or we tried? I know it was...
But it wasn't train, right?
No, it was somebody else.
Somebody else.
From San Antonio.
Well, definitely, I had it, and if you can figure out the names of that company, um, I'll definitely give a call on it and see what we can do as far as bringing back some more press, full three events and information. I could just provide them with that, um...
I'm gonna table the items, Ms. McDaniel.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Um, the claim docket for the sheriff, for sheriff, excuse me, for the public safety is ninety-six thousand, three...
Does it, no, we have to take those off? I think you got the stat right there.
What is? I don't understand.
Oh, yes, yes. To the claim docket, yes, ma'am.
So we would have to take these off.
The la, the last...
I know, but I didn't hear what you were talking about.
Oh, the, the last four expenditures on there?
For train.
For train.
Not the last four, it's just the last one that I'm questioning. There's actually five of them there, for train. All, all of those, give me one second.
Twenty-seven, for sure.
There's five of them.
Yes, so, um...
You're talking about the service proposal for eighteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars?
Yes, I'm not too sure, and that isn't even the same as this, so I'm not too sure in that one. So if we're gonna approve the claim docket, I would like to hold up on that one for my review. All the other ones, yes, I have verified that that work has been done. Um, it's just this one.
Which one's that?
The eight four twenty-five, it's the service proposal for eighteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars.
And twenty-seven five twenty-four, what is it?
Yes, twenty-seven five thirty-one five...
What is it, what is the service installation? Is that, what is that, Commissioner?
I have the invoice there at the office, um... All these other units, we have the, the emails and the correspondence, several work orders that you've re-jungified the station, um... Which one did you ask before again, Judge, I'm sorry?
Oh, because Mr. Perez de was asking also about the twenty-seven thousand...
The server, the service installation?
Yeah.
That one was done back in July sixteen, twenty twenty-five. Off the top of my head, Judge, I don't even want to misinform you, I'm not, um, entirely sure, but I just know that these other amounts, 'cause I brought them with me. I looked through them, but I cannot tell you right now, I can definitely get you that information.
You can assure that it's been, uh...
Oh, yeah. I, I make sure that when I do sign the invoices, like, it's, that unit is back up and running and that it's currently not down with fully cement payment or anything, um...
Can I entertain a motion?
Move.
I'll get you that, if I'm sure.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Does, does for that revision, we're gonna prove claim docket minus that one?
Correct. Minus the last one. I entertain a motion to recess, and adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, second by Commissioner Talamontes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge, thank you, yes, thank you.